Meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to start off with invocation by Mrs. Cupka and followed up by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Miller. So if you would all please stand.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us all together here this evening to do the business of our community. Please watch over all who gather here and provide safe passage home. And we'd especially ask that with an impending another anniversary of September 11th, 2001, that you watch over our first responders, all those who served that day, their families, those who lost, all those who serve us now, our military, our community, and our great country. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Cupka. Moving on, amendments to the agenda. Mr. Miller, any amendments tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll open up for public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. Is there anyone here this evening for general public comment? Come on up, Ms. Lavelle.
Hi. My name is Anna Maria Lobo. I live in Presidential Heights. Well, dear Mrs. Cupka, I would like to know if you have any luck with Verizon Wireless because it's very hard to get in touch with anybody to ask any questions about my accounts or these companies raising the prices and they're moving the companies out of the country. Also, this Breeze Line is very hard to get in touch with them. I had to wait very long time for a speak to somebody. The internet for the last three years has not been very good, but these people are great for raising the prices since they went the contract with the government, they want more money and less service. They say to serve us better like investment in cutting-edge technology, including faster, high-speed data. I don't like this company wanted to invest with the customer's money. They're going to have first solar power plant and invest in electric cars. They raised my bill this month up to $200. That is not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight for general public comment?
Debbie Fairfax, 623 Kings Highway. In 2019, a section was added to the Code of Ordinances to set some basic standards for data centers. As King George is in the process of updating our ordinances, it's important that this section is developed to be more comprehensive. Since data centers are currently allowed by right in industrial districts, it is essential that ordinances governing these facilities be well thought out and that we, not corporations seeking to establish data centers, are setting the standards that are best for King George and its residents. Localities with existing data centers are now realizing that they need stricter regulations in place. In July 2022, Loudoun County's Transportation and Land Use Committee proposed changes to regulations that would set out new standards for data centers in the areas of building design and noise. Prince William County's Board of Supervisors Chair has asked staff to investigate potential changes to this county's noise ordinance due to complaints of residents who live near data centers. Chandler, Arizona, once pursued technology companies to gain data centers. A publication written for the data center industry itself called Data Center Dynamics stated in an article dated December 2021, speaking of Chandler, quote, "City officials say data centers aren't sustainable, don't generate quality jobs, and produce disturbing levels of noise to nearby residents." Chandler is now seeking to adopt amendments that would eliminate by-right operation of data centers in any zoning district, require a noise study before and after data center construction or expansion, and require sound mitigation for mechanical equipment. Falkir's zoning ordinances currently require noise impact and abatement studies as part of the application process for data centers. Unfortunately, Falkir's and Prince William's noise ordinances exempt air conditioning units, and it is those that are causing the incessant high-pitched droning. Additionally, Prince William is grappling with regulating combined decibel levels of four data centers near one another when residents began complaining with only one being operational. Wisely, Warrington's noise ordinances go beyond decibel level restrictions and also cover noise frequencies. There is an option for water cooling of facilities, but this type of cooling requires enormous amounts of water. Our current ordinance states that a data center must be connected to a public water source. The definition of public water source needs to be clearly specified, and the use of water by data centers needs to be tightly regulated. A quick internet search includes groundwater as source water, and a public water system can be defined by the EPA as one that serves an average of 25 individuals for at least 60 days a year. By that definition, a well that serves 25 employees would constitute a public water system. The open land is not going anywhere, and neither are the hopes of potential development. Let's take the time we need to get our ordinances solid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fairfax. Anyone else for general public comment?
I live at 623 Kings Highway. Mr. Chairman, looking at the battery energy storage facility section in the supplementary regulations, a site plan shall be accompanied by an emergency plan that includes emergency procedures to be followed in case of fire or explosion. By the end of 2019, lithium-ion batteries provided more than 90% of the large-scale battery storage capacity in the U.S. Traditional fire suppression systems and firefighting techniques and processes may be ineffective on lithium-ion battery systems and can cause additional harm. Fires in a battery energy storage facility are often a result of a process called thermal runaway, which occurs when a battery cell creates heat that it cannot dissipate adequately. The resulting dynamic temperature increase causes a cascading effect. Chemicals contained within a lithium-ion battery can be released during a fire, creating a potential for explosion. Chemical releases can also contribute to liquid pollution when mixed with firefighting water, thereby contaminating soil or groundwater. In August 2019, the Arizona Corporation Commission produced its findings from the inquiry of the Arizona Public Service Battery Failure Incident and corresponding explosion at its McMccan Energy Storage Facility. This explosion left eight firefighters and one police officer hospitalized. The Fire Department report noted concerns about a serious risk of large-scale explosion and recommended that any large-scale battery energy storage facility should be built in isolation and noted an explosion could potentially flatten buildings at some distance. The report noted that a two-megawatt battery facility is equivalent to 1.72 tons of TNT. Just one of the battery storage facilities listed on the PJM Interconnection New Service Q for King George is planned to be a 100-megawatt capacity. Using the previously mentioned measure, this would be the equivalent explosive yield of 86 tons of TNT. In the report, it is noted that lithium-ion batteries can be made with chemistries that include compounds that can release hydrogen fluoride in the event of a fire or explosion, and that large amounts of hydrogen fluoride could be released and dispersed that would affect and harm the public at a substantial distance downwind. In addition, there would be concerns about lingering hydrogen fluoride contamination in the affected areas. Hydrogen fluoride is a highly corrosive and powerful contact poison, exposure to which requires immediate medical attention. It can cause blindness by rapidly destroying the corneas. Breathing it in at high levels or in combination with skin contact can cause death from an irregular heartbeat or from fluid buildup in the lungs. Please consider these facts as reasons to revise the current supplementary regulations to make them more stringent to protect the people of King George before any battery energy storage facility is considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairfax. Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, Mr. Dines, anyone online for public comment?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, colleagues, anyone have anything read in that needs to be read into? All right. So, we will close public comment at this time, and we will move on to reports of members of the board. Spender.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the Fairfax's for coming and providing some of that information, some of it that I haven't even seen in the HB Small Energy Project Subcommittee that I'm on. Thank you, Ms. Lavelle, coming to express your concern about Breeze Line and Verizon. I've heard from quite a few residents having issues with both of those companies currently. And I know last week I had lost Verizon service for over four hours, nothing, only just text messaging I could do. So I understand the concern that paid them a lot of money and the service is lacking at the moment, and we need some better options. So I appreciate you coming and sharing. First off, I'd like to talk about the HB 206 Small Energy Subcommittee I'm on. We have a final proposal that will be, we have, by September 12th, we have to give comment. I've distributed a copy to our county attorney, our county minister, Heather Hall from Community Development, so they give me some feedback when I enter my data into the survey, and then we will meet again on September 28th to go over what the final proposal would be. Hopefully, it won't be 61 pages long, and then that'll be submitted to the state legislator for a vote in the next legislative session. I really enjoy being on this, and I think it's really good for the five localities that are part of it. There's a couple cities, Hampton Roads, and then three counties that we actually have an impact because localities a lot of times don't have any kind of say in these regulations. They kind of bristle at having local people on these committees, but I think it's really important because we bring a good mix, and it was good give and take to make sure that localities are looked out for. Also, within the last week, I met with the local chapter of the amateur radio operators, and they had given me a proposal to want to come back in coordination with the county. So I'll be bringing some ideas forward and talking to our sheriffs, Sheriff Giles and Chief Moody about it. I'm doing this in honor, especially I understand the importance of amateur radio. My dad was a lifetime member, had one of the original call signs. He was very proud of it, and he served as an emergency manager in Pike County, Pennsylvania. And I know the importance of ham radio operation to help out localities within times of need when other systems going down, amateur radio is there to help out. So I'll be bringing more information forward. He gave me a very large presentation, so I have to digest it. And then last but not least, I sent this to my colleagues last week. It's, I talked to Mr. Vic Mason, the judge, about reopening the Historical Society, and so I will read some of the, if I get consensus that move forward with this idea so that they can start the process in reopening the museum that's located on the courthouse grounds in the old jail. So first, there's a strong desire in the community for the King George Historical Museum to be reopened as soon as possible. With that goal in mind, I've spoken with Vic Mason, I've come up with the parameters for reopening. Number one, all paperwork up to date so that the organization is in compliance. From my understanding, that has been accomplished, and the audit is ongoing, and it might even be complete by this time. A memo of understanding be formally worked on with the county attorney concerning the use of the county building is to remember that that building, Historical Society, has been using it free of charge because they provide a service to the county. They host the Christmas tree lighting, they do a lot of events, and they come, they used to go to the schools more before COVID to do presentations. So a memo of understanding that would map out the agreement between the county and the King George Historical Society, and this agreement could include the upkeep inside, access by the county, approval of courthouse lawn displays, and no rent payment in lieu of service to the citizens of our community. Number three, understanding that the county does not control the inside museum space but only courthouse lawn and any displays visible from the road, Route 3, or back in the parking lot, not like if you looked in the window, but in a reasonable, like the parking lot or on Route 3. Number four, an annual board report to the Board of Supervisors. And number five, a liaison from the Board of Supervisors to the Historical Society. We have one, I think, in the future, probably for Ralph Bunch, but we do have on the committee two of the supervisors on the Dahlgren Heritage Museum. I serve in that, and I would like to serve for the Historical Society. I've sort of been designated the historical person, so I do love history. So those are all the things I am putting forth, and with consensus from the board, I will pass it on to the president of the Historical Society and take feedback from the board right now.
May I, Mr. Chair? I don't have a problem with that. I just would recommend that you pass it on to Mr. Mason, the clerk of the Circuit Court, please. Thank you.
The only thing I would ask with regards to number three, understand that the county does not control the inside of the museum space, can appreciate the autonomy of the museum, but at the same time, it is county property. And I don't anticipate that there would be any issues with any of the displays probably, but I'm not, I don't know if I'd be willing to just give free rein to say anyone that they could do anything they want inside that space, and the county has no recourse at that point.
I don't have a problem with most of it. I think that we do need to narrow it down a little bit. You know, like Mr. Granger said, it's still part of our courthouse, and it may, we just may need to narrow it down a little bit and, you know, get with Mr. Mason as well, so.
I did run this by Mr. Mason. He ran it by the judge, and he did not have a problem, but, you know, maybe we could have the curator, the appointed curator, interim curator, to come and talk about, you talked about the inside museum space. Would you like to see some more tightening up before?
I think maybe that's something that could be worked out in the course of the MOU. That can be a term, that could be a condition of the MOU if everyone else would agree to that, that might be a way of enforcing, you know, what you're talking about.
Okay. I mean, Mr. Collins? Okay.
All right, thank you. That's the end of my board report.
Thank you. Mr. Granger?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who came out to speak, Ms. Lavelle. I as well hear challenges from people in the community with Verizon and Breeze Line. I agree with you that, you know, it's not obviously what we're looking for, so we are limited to some degree. They are a private corporation. We can't force them to do certain things, you know, but trying to find new companies that might come in and provide some competition to provide better service, I think would be a good way to go, maybe to address that kind of an issue. Mr. and Mrs. Fairfax, thank you both of you for coming out and providing your input on ordinances and your suggestions for possible ways to address some of the concerns that you brought up. So I appreciate you sharing your comments. Other than that, the only thing I have is just like to say thank you to staff all that came out for the 25th, August 25th, for the CIP work sessions, preparing everything to help us figure out what we're going to be doing for the CIP. I believe we're going to be voting on that tonight would be the plan. So just thank you for the time you put in and provide us information so that we can make informed decisions. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger and Ms. Cupka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening and sharing your concerns with us. Mr. and Mrs. Fairfax, thank you very much for sharing your concerns about some of our local ordinances. And as you know, we are working on updating them, so if you haven't already, I know, I know we did see you at the hearing a couple weeks ago, I would also encourage you, I believe the next work session of the Planning Commission for the ordinance overhaul is September 27th, so you may wish to attend that, and they do offer public comment at the beginning of those as well. So thank you for sharing. Ms. Lavelle, you did mention me by name, so I will address your question. I personally do not have a contact at Verizon. I feel like, and I'm not trying to punt it, but did you get anywhere, Chairman Stonehill? Because I know you mentioned it in your board report last month. Okay. I don't have anyone at Verizon yet. I do have someone at Breeze Line. I actually fielded in your neighborhood another customer complaint a few hours ago, and they originally were told it would be at least a week before anyone came out to address their issue, and someone was there within an hour and a half, and it has been resolved. So if you have a Breeze Line concern, anyone out there listening, if you have a Breeze Line concern, please feel free to send me an email. Do not hit me on Facebook Messenger because I don't always watch it. Send me an email, and I will do what I can to send an email to them and try to get you the attention you need. So moving on for my board report, Thursday, August 18th, I attended the Navy Lands Forum at the UMW Dahlgren Campus. The panels depicting the Navy's acquisition of land to establish Dahlgren are on display there. Thank you to Dahlgren Heritage Foundation for hosting the event, UMW's Historic Preservation Class for yet another successful partnership, and the Community Foundation of Rappahannock River Region for the grant funding that made it possible. On Friday, August 19th, I attended the retirement celebration for Dr. Rob Benson. Congratulations to him and thank you to him for 10 years of service to our school community. Wednesday, August 24th, I attended the Fredericksburg Regional Chamber of Commerce Annual First Responders Appreciation Breakfast and Awards Event. I see Chief Moody is here in the audience, as is Sheriff Giles. Congratulations to the following personnel for their Silver Valor recognition for lifesaving efforts for both a mother and a child during the January snowstorm. Lieutenant James Simmons, King George Sheriff's Office, Communications Officer Madison Kearns, King George Sheriff's Office 911 Training Officer, Division Chief Sean Simmons, EMS Lieutenant Christina DeGry, Lieutenant Kevin Cook, firefighter Cameron Henderson, and firefighter Rodney Ash. Congratulations, well deserved. I have a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I move to recommend to the Circuit Court the appointment of Mr. Walter Moss to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second. We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, colleagues. And one last thing, I want to thank Sheriff Giles for his efforts and his office's efforts last week regarding making available extra security, and also Dr. Boyd in accommodating an earlier start time for the football game that was originally scheduled for Friday night that unfortunately the away team opted to cancel due to security concerns on their end. So thank you to the schools and the sheriff's office for everything you do to keep our students, our families, our community, our athletes safe. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Cupka. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone out there. As far as a public comment, Ms. Lavelle, you mentioned Verizon, Breeze, so the top three that we're having troubles with is Verizon, Breeze Line, and the trash services. So I know that Chairman Stonehill looked into the Verizon, and you've worked on Breeze Line, but I was wondering if, I know that they're private organizations, but I was wondering if we could put it on a to-do list to bring that information together for us to, hopefully, we come up with some of these resolutions. All three of these will impact any economic development in this area, so I think we need to somehow, with the authority we have vested in us, do something better that's going on now. The Fairfax's, good evenings, good to see you all. I'm glad to see that you're involved and you are, you're on top of things. The one thing that, there's two things I picked out. So the ordinance update Ms. Cupka spoke of, it's going to the Planning Commission now. I've been paying attention to it since it started, and it will come to us. And one of those things in the ordinance that is discussion is noise. So Mr. Bennett from Fairview Beach, in regards to the, we've had ongoing discussions in relation to the noise out there on the river in the summertime that is the folks in Fairview and sometimes in Potomac Landing, not very peaceful. So this noise ordinance has been going around and around since I can remember. So I think it's, I think we need to work on that sooner rather than later and get this noise ordinance squared away so that we don't have these issues. So with the boats and with whatever could come in the future, we need to be set in our ordinances that we can address those issues. I don't usually tell you what I did every day, but Monday I mowed the grass, Tuesday, no. So I have had an opportunity to talk to many constituents in my extended district now, and we will approach the golf cart thing in a few minutes. I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Bennett today. Tommy, I've spoke with you, and I'm sorry, ma'am, I forgot your name, but I was in a meeting with you on Buckley, Ms. Buckley. So in our district, my district runs from basically 218 and 206, part of 206, all the way down to Pass Potansie, but not the left side of Pass Potansie, the right side, so all the riverside. So my interest, of course, is in my district, but everything else is going on in King George, and I just want you all to know that we've spent a lot of energy being prepared for what's coming forth in this county. Thank you for, Mr. Chairman. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I just can say thanks for everybody coming out. Ms. Lavelle, thanks for coming out like usual. I paid my bill this morning and saw there was an increase as well, so it's something we definitely have to work on. And as Mr. Collins pointed out, as a private company, we really don't have a whole lot of control over, but hopefully, maybe when the other service comes in, maybe they'll step up their game a little bit when there's a little extra competition. Verizon, I think it's gotten a little bit better. Before, I could not even make a phone call at my house. Now I can, sort of, if I hold my left hand up in the air. I did speak to Senator Stewart the other day. His office is actively engaged with them to find out what's going on and how they can redirect or change back to where we were, you know, a year ago, whatever, when the service was much better. So he is actively working on that, and he will keep me up to date on that. Contact-wise, there's, I don't know, I don't even think the president has contact with Verizon. I don't know. I can't find anybody, nor can he, so, but we'll work on it. Mr. and Mrs. Fairfax, thanks for coming out. Glad to see you guys come out for another meeting. And like they all had already said, you know, get together with the Planning Commission and have public comment, stay up on things, you know, things that you brought up were very good for us to hear as well. Safety issues on different things. I know Chief Moody has looked into all that, and we've had a number of briefings on, you know, different tech things and how they're related with, you know, safety, fire hazards, batteries. I remember we spoke a while back on battery stuff, I think it was a couple years ago, when we started talking about solar stuff. He, you know, he came out in a public meeting, and they talked about the different firefighting techniques that they had to use for batteries and all that stuff. So I'm sure that he is, you know, up to date as possible. So we will keep all that stuff in mind, so. And as Mr. Granger said, staff, thanks for doing the CIP, and we will get that all taken care of. Mrs. Hahn, thank you very much for all your input on that as well. And I also went to the first responder breakfast up in Fredericksburg, put on by the Fredericksburg Chamber. It was a very great event, and honored a whole bunch of great staff up there that have, you know, the first responders that have put their lives on the line, and, you know, wanted to say thanks again to the sheriff's office and to that whole crew that responded during that big snowstorm to help that woman. It was, it's always great when King George is in there and to, with the rest of the offices up there. And that's all I have right now. So I will close reports for members of the board and move on to the consent agenda.
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to Constitutional Officers Report. Public Safety Radio System presented by Sheriff Giles. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I've brought Jeremy Thomas and Drew Wine from Motorola to kind of give you an update on where they're at as far as this radio system goes and on the proposal that the county attorney has that she's Tonight, I've brought Jeremy Thomas and Drew Wine from Motorola to kind of give you an update on where they're at as far as this radio system goes and on the proposal that the county attorney has that she's, she's working on. It is also my understanding that a financial RFP has been sent out, so that's good news. And again, like I said, the county attorney has a proposal, so she can fine tune it. But what I would like to do is ask Jeremy Thomas to come forward and kind of let you know where Motorola is in this process and where we can continue to move forward.
Thank you, Sheriff, and thank you to the board. Really appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to speak on an extremely important project for the county. So, to get you up to speed, we've had several discussions, and we've presented to you, and since then, we have provided a proposal on July the 7th. Over the last two months, we have been reviewing and discussing the scope of work. We've added the schools to the project as well. So, at this point today, we have solidified the design and the scope of work. We've been working with Ms. Hahn in finance to make sure we've answered and addressed her questions, providing more detailed resolution on the equipment list pricing, making sure those discounts align with the cooperative procurement agreement and the VITA contract, and then making the payment terms follow the scope of work, so it's more amenable to the county as well. So, that brings us to our remaining task here, which is to work through the terms and conditions. So, I feel like we are very close on that. Ideally, we would have had that resolved before tonight, but we're at the point where we believe just a phone call between Motorola Council and, and the county attorney, and we can have that resolved here. I believe we're, we're days away and not, not weeks away. So, with that said, I know that we can come back to the next board meeting this month and have, at that point, I'm confident we'll have everything resolved and have the proposal ready, ready to go. But I will say, maybe suggest an alternative and, and a reason why you may want to move forward tonight with the contingency that we do solidify negotiations, finalize all the terms and conditions, and everything's agreeable. And that's because the timing is, is very urgent. The current radio system for public safety is at end of life. It's at end of support, and a lot of components, key components of the, of the system, parts and pieces are no longer being manufactured. There's, there's a very large pricing incentive for the contract award by September 23rd. It's in excess of $3 million. And then, also, it's important to us and critical to us to stay on schedule. We want to accelerate this project to get this new radio system online for your, your county first responders as soon as we can. We are, of course, battling with supply chain issues like everyone is in the industry, so the sooner that we can move forward, the sooner we can place the order, manufacture equipment, we can go live and, and cut that system over sooner. Our schedule can also be impacted because we, we have to do our coverage testing to guarantee and, or prove our guarantee that you have wonderful coverage throughout the county, and that's contingent upon us testing when there's leaves on the trees. So, leaves actually do impact our coverage. We designed for that, so, excuse me, so we want to make sure we test in the worst-case scenario. So, timing needs to align with testing before the end of October when we see the leaves falling. So, that would be our goal, to get that done by the end of next year. So, with that, I'm open to answer any questions, and, as I said, just excited to be here and anxious to get the project underway.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer a motion, if I may.
Sure.
I move to approve the contract for the Public Safety Radio System, subject to form and final negotiations by the county attorney, because we, we've talked about this at several CIP work sessions. We know how much money we're talking about. We know what the plan is to finance it, and so that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. What are the sticking points that we're, in regards to the contract, that we currently are facing? Do we need to tweak our motion to address any of those?
So, the kind of, the, the main issue is that I did not get some final details until Wednesday on the contract, and my expectation was that because it's a cooperative procurement, a piggyback contract, that the contract would follow the VITA contract. Motorola is proposing something different, so I, I certainly want to have a conversation with their attorney about the terms of, of the contract, but, you know, they've been very responsive about providing additional information to both Donna and myself as we've been reviewing the proposal.
What kind of impacts would that have to the, the contract in the end if you're using a different vehicle, I guess?
So, there, you know, there's terms that have to do with, for example, the, terms that have to do with price escalation and things like that, that we want to make sure we lock in and that they would not change the prices and that we're getting, you know, the same deal as VITA and other agencies through the cooperative procurement.
Okay. So, if, if we don't get it in line with what we were expecting, then it has to come back to the board, is what we're saying?
Right. If, if, if ultimately, if the motion carries and, you know, I'm not comfortable with how negotiations go, then I'd bring it back to you on the 20th, and, and there'd still be time. They're proposing this discount as long as the contract is executed prior to the 23rd, which I think is achievable.
Tracking. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
So, the terms and conditions need to be worked out before the, before we go forward on this, so we could have a special meeting if you need to do it before the 23rd for approval. So, or we could table it till the 20th, it wouldn't affect anything, would it? Chris?
What's your question, Mr. Collins?
So, if we, if we table it till the 20th, when the terms and conditions are all worked out, and then we could prove it, and you could, it could be signed before the 23rd if we do it on the 20th.
It's my understanding that if the motion carries tonight, that, that would give Motorola the option to, to start pushing forward with everything else. It gives them the wheels to start doing that. That doesn't fall along con, with the contract. Do you understand what I mean? I mean...
Well, if, but if the terms and conditions don't meet muster, then it might be, it could be a moot issue.
You know, my goal would be to have those terms and conditions, those issues and open items worked out this week. I think we can talk a little bit about scheduling sometime. I think a phone call will hopefully resolve all of those issues. And so, if we're just days away, you know, do we need to push it back to the 20th? We could, we could, we could get that done sooner. And again, that accelerates the, the timing with our, our project schedule, gives us a couple more weeks. I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but in the grand scheme, it can add up.
A million dollars, I mean, $11 million is a lot of money. So, a couple of days, I think, it's not unfair.
I mean, if it's not going to affect us too much, I'd like to see the whole package all done. I mean, we're going to move forward on it, and I mean, it's, you know, like Mr. Collins said, it's a whole lot of money from, in my eye, and I, you know, I would, I would certainly like to see everything 100% done and brought to us. I mean, the leaves are going to be on the trees until the end of October, so I think, you know, if, if it's not going to put you back too much, if we had everything in a package ready to go for our next meeting for us to move forward on, I mean, I would feel a whole lot better with that as opposed to doing some of it now and then having to amend something if something's not right. So, that's just my two cents.
I thought I'd have heard Mr. Collins make a comment about a, a special meeting. Would there be any interest in possibly holding one in a week? I mean, if we're really looking to try to get this earlier to, to be able to start the project as soon as possible, if we're talking a couple of days in order to get the contract language, I guess, hammered out and finalized? I know it's never the most exciting idea to have another meeting, but I think Mr. Collins brings up a good point. It is an $11 million project. It is, it is a big project, and, and as Mr. Stonehill said, I'm, you know, I would like to be able to see those terms before we, we do make an approval, I think.
Spender?
I, I would like to see it all hammered out, too, before.
All right, can we, I mean, can we, you feel confident it would be done by the, our last meeting in September?
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, we had a motion properly seconded.
Right, we have a, I'm sorry, we have a motion properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Chair votes nay. Motion does not pass.
I've got more, not on the radio system.
Okay.
If you don't mind. The next part of my report is the Chairman of the Jail Authority Board for the Rappahannock Regional Jail. I come before you tonight to ask for a consensus to send the letter, which I believe is in your board packets, to the Delegate Ranson and Senator Stewart, so they can pass our concerns to the work group that is reviewing and making recommendations regarding the reduction or elimination of costs and fees charged to inmates. In the 2022 session of the Virginia Acts of Assembly, Chapter 359 states, "An act to direct the State Board of Local and Regional Jails to make recommendations regarding certain fees in local and regional correctional facilities." Senate Bill 581 was approved on April 11th, 2022, to be enacted by the General Assembly of Virginia. One, Section 1 states, "The State Board of Local and Regional Jails, the Board, shall convene a work group to review and make recommendations regarding the reduction or elimination of costs and fees charged to inmates in local or regional correctional facilities to defray the costs of an inmate's keep, work release, or participation in educational or rehabilitive programs, to use telephone services, to purchase items or services for stores or commissaries, to utilize electronic visitation systems and otherwise deemed relevant by the Board. The work group shall be composed of two members of the House Committee of Public Safety who are not members of the same political party, two members of the State Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services who are not members of the same political party. Such legislative members shall appoint as members of the work group, one formerly incarcerated person, one family member of the currently incarcerated person, and at least one representative of the following organizations or companies: the Virginia Sheriff's Association, the Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police, the Virginia Association of Regional Jails, the American Civil Liberties Union of Virginia, Worth Rises, Social Action Linking Together, Justice Forward Virginia, the Sisters of Prison Reform, Americans for Prosperity, a vendor that provides telephone services to local correctional facilities within the Commonwealth, and a vendor that provides commissary services to the local correctional facility within the Commonwealth. The work group shall report its findings and recommendations to the Chairman of the House Committee of Public Safety and the Senate Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services by December 1st, 2022. Members of the Board, it goes without saying that if the fees to inmates are cut or eliminated, the burden of, to provide programs and services to the inmates will fall on the localities that the member of the correctional, that is a member of the correctional facility. If legislation restricts these revenues, the Rappahannock Regional Jail, which we are part of, could lose $2,727,525 in revenue to the general fund and $625,576 in revenue from the inmate commissary purchases. In addition, the facility would have to pay for goods and services previously covered by inmate commissary revenue in the amount of $801,001 and $159,000. Previously, free phone services could cost millions to provide to inmates at no cost. This loss of revenue and the new expenses will be passed directly to the serving localities. Without the revenue of the offset costs, valuable services would be eliminated, and additional costs would be paid by taxpayers that already bear significant burden to cover the vast majority of the cost to operate the jail. Eliminating free programs and services that go above and beyond the state minimum standards would have a detrimental ca, cost impact to the localities. The inmates would be negatively impacted when programs and services are cut to meet the financial needs of the facility. So, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, for those reasons alone, I'm asking for a consensus from the Board to ask staff to send the letter to Delegate Ranson and Senator Stewart so they can pass our concerns to that work group. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Giles. Board?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure.
Thank you, Sheriff Giles, for coming out this evening and bringing this to us. As, as you know, I serve with you on the jail board. I, at that meeting last month, requested jail staff develop this correspondence for us for this purpose, so that each locality member of the jail could send this on to our elected representatives in Richmond. And I mentioned this to you all last month in my board report that this was coming as well. So, if you just add up the fee impacts for the whole jail, it comes to $4,154,260. And King George County, our locality, is responsible for 7% of the cost of running the jail. So, that's $290,798.20 that we would have, almost a cent, that we would have to make up somewhere to provide for the jail. And honestly, a lot of the things we're talking about frankly are not necessities. They're, I'm sorry, but if, if you do the crime, you pay the time, and it doesn't have to be luxurious. We're talking about tablets that they get to use, special meals, certain extra things that they can buy from the commissary. So, that's a big impact to our law-abiding taxpayers to have to fund some of these niceties, luxury items for, for those we house. So, I appreciate you bringing this forward, and the only suggestion I had for the letter is if, if staff, we could just clean up, and I can hand it to Mr. Miller, if we clean up the addresses so that Delegate Ranson's letter is going to her, a district address, just like Senator Stewart's is going to his district address, because they're not in session right now. So, if we send hers to Richmond, it may be a while before she sees it, is what I'm saying. So, that was the only suggestion I had to clean up the letter a little bit. Thank you again for bringing this forward, and I hope my colleagues will support it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, anything? Okay. So, we all had consensus to go ahead and, and send that? Okay, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, moving on to the report of the county attorney. Zilacki?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to take an opportunity to do a brief introduction of Jessica Washington, who's on her third week as Assistant County Attorney. Jessica is a King George High School graduate. She was a recipient of the Sheriff's Scholarship before she attended George Mason, and she attended the William &amp; Mary College of Law. She has a, a good track record of experience with public interest, as well as she did a stint last summer with a, a private law firm. So, I think she's a, a great addition, and she's been very enthusiastic and learning the ropes and doing lots of good work. The other items I wanted to update you on are that Mr. Miller and I are still looking at scheduling a work session on the proration of personal property taxes. He's been very busy with the CIP, so we haven't wanted to interfere with that, but I didn't know if there was any direction on when you all would like to see that work session scheduled, or we could kind of poll you all informally and come up with some...
Say, why don't you just send out a, do I say doodle? And we can all respond to that. It seems to be the best way to get us to have a, a date.
Okay. And then, just an update that the advertisements are going to run for the next meeting for the Ralph Bunch High School Revitalization Zone, Abandoned School Revitalization Zone Ordinance is upcoming on the, on the next meeting, as well as we're likely to have the, the transient occupancy tax, and those changes would match the state code changes that take effect in October. That's all I have. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lackey.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Collins.
So could we not have any Wednesdays in that choices? And the county, Assistant County Attorney, welcome. And it's great to hear that you're a King George graduate. That's one of our goals, is always to bring people back home. Thank you for coming back home.
Any other questions, anybody? All right. Ms. Washington, thanks for coming, and, you know, congratulations on your position, and I'm sure we'll, you'll do a great job. And like Mr. Collins said, it's nice to have a local, homegrown person here. So welcome. All right, moving on to our public hearing. Okay, King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding the proposed amendments to the golf cart ordinance. I will first ask staff, I will first ask for the staff report, then I will open the floor for public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker, in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of the public comment, I will bring the matter back to the Board for consideration. The Board may or may not take public action tonight, depending on any information received during public comment. Mr. Miller?
I believe Ms. Lackey has the staff report.
So this item has, has some history. I think the last time I gave you an update, a significant update, was in April, and we discussed some of the proposed changes that were largely initiated by the Fairview Beach Residents Association. The changes, kind of the motivating factor was a desire that rather than a year-to-year renewal for either a homeowners association or residents association to have to, once again, on an annual basis, agree that they're going to perform inspections of golf carts, they just wanted to streamline, streamline that process. So one of the major changes of the ordinance would be every five years, they would just have to go ahead and, again, inform the county that they're willing to follow those practices. There's also been a few state code changes. They're a little bit technical, but in, in addition to golf carts, the golf cart ordinance also now applies to utility vehicles. That is not to be confused with all-terrain vehicles, vehicles of that nature. The distinction is more to define utility vehicles, very similar to a golf cart, but that are not designed for golf purposes. So I've heard those types of vehicles referred to as gators. They're more the, they look like a golf cart, but they're used more for security, landscaping, horticulture, things of that nature. So that is, that is one of the other changes. And then, another change is that instead of the homeowners association or residents association initially posting the signs, although, mind you, these are existing zones, existing golf cart zones, so there's already signage there, but it will, it will better match the state code provisions where it's a reimbursement obligation, rather than upfront costs. So that's something to be mindful of, in the event that there are any other future golf cart ordinance, new locations added to the ordinance. So that's just a kind of an overview of the changes. Once again, there's no changes currently proposed as to locations. The locations are all the same as from what was approved by the Board in 2014.
Mr. Chairman.
Finish, Ms. Lackey?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
So the other change was the age, correct?
Yes, so the state code provides that the county has to be at least as stringent as state code provisions. So one of the, I'm not sure if it was in the 2007 ordinance or 2014, anyhow, the existing ordinance provides you have to be 18 years old to drive a golf cart. One of the proposed amendments would be to, you just have to have a driver's license in order to drive a golf cart in one of the designated areas.
And question two. So I noticed on some information that you sent us, that the third section of Potomac Landing wasn't included. Those roads are state-maintained, and that, that property or association did come to the Board and get approval for that, but from my understanding, you say they're not in that. So I don't understand where that, what happened.
So I've only found that the golf cart ordinance locations were designated in 2014. They currently only include the public streets that are specified in the ordinance, which are in Sections 1 and 2 of Potomac Landing. So it would be possible, if there was additional interest from the homeowners association on extending that area, that would be subject to the will of the Board. There would have to be some traffic compatibility findings, and it would need to have additional notices of advertisement. But that wouldn't necessarily prevent enacting the amendments that were advertised and are proposed for the agenda tonight, which are kind of more along the lines of cleanups to match the state code, as I've described.
So question three, back to question two. So they came, the Potomac Overlook, I think they're called, which is Section 3 and 4. Section 3 came to this Board. They had their highways designated, they did all the studies, they did all the work, they did the applications, and they were approved. So between 2014 and today, somehow that disappeared. So I don't know why we would make them go through that again, the whole process, to go through that again. Because I was present for that. So I, I don't know why we would do the ordinance without them as an approved area, when they were once approved, and no reason that they have been pulled from approval.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, I haven't found evidence that, other than Sections 1 and 2 of Potomac Landing, were included in the ordinance. There's the 2014 ordinance amendments, and there's also, in the land records, actually, the ordinance required that the agreements with the homeowners association or residents association be recorded in the land records. So that also does not reflect that, for whatever reason, I, I, you know, wasn't with the county at that time. I don't know why Sections 3 and 4 were not included from Potomac Landing.
Section 4 doesn't, it won't apply to Section 4 because of the speed limit. So they're up the hill. Section 3, it does apply. I don't know about the land records. I know that I filed one for Potomac Landing myself, and I'm sure that that was filed by Fairview long before us. So I, I might want to, somebody might want to contact the president of that association, which I don't even know who it is. Just doesn't seem fair that they would have to go through the process again. The only problem that I would have with the, what she, what she proposed was the Section 3, and of course, the age. I'm really against having 16-year-olds drive golf carts, and I've been in discussion with Fairview Beach on many occasions in regards to that. Though I have a strong, personal and professional reason not to have 16-year-olds drive golf carts, I have spoke with Fairview Beach folks, I have spoke with Potomac Landing folks, and that's what they want, and that's who I represent. So that's what I would vote for, though I disagree with the age. But I am, but I'm, I don't know how we can go forth without the Section 3 in there. Any suggestions?
May I, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So we already know from the guidance that Ms. Lackey provided, that to add them on, whether a study or whatever is required or not, we would have to re-advertise. There's no reason we can't move forward with it as it is tonight, because we've put a lot of time and work into this. And then do a further investigation, because my understanding was this was just brought to Ms. Lackey's attention in the last week or so. I will say, it was my understanding that representatives from Potomac Landing were invited to all the meetings that we had, and I don't believe anyone ever came to the meetings that I had with Ms. Buckley and Mr. Bennett. To my recollection, the sheriff was there as well. You were at one of the meetings, Mr. Collins. So I say we move forward and have the public hearing as it was published, move forward with the ordinance tonight, and then direct our county attorney to revisit the issue with regard to the roads in Potomac Landing 3 that don't appear to have been included. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I know that Section 1 and 2, which is a separate, this, it's not all Potomac Landing, there's two different associations there. So I don't know if that Section 3 was notified. So you can move forth with the ordinance, but I think that you would have to reach out to this Section 3, so I don't know, is that, so if that's public property, because it's been turned over to the state, if I drive my golf cart on there, and there's no agreement, would I be in violation of law?
So if I may, Mr. Chair, the, the law does require that the designations be made by the county, and as far as I've been able to determine from records, that staff helped me compile, the Section 3 of Potomac Landing is not approved by the county at this time for use of golf carts.
One more time, please. So Sheriff Giles, you see the quandary that would put in somebody from Potomac Landing or Fairview Beach for that one section, Section 3. Until this gets ironed out, what is your view on that enforcement?
Let's just say that I hope that it gets ironed out quickly. You know, I mean, I'm not going to sit up here and tell you I'm not going to enforce the laws, or have my deputies enforce them, I'm not going to tell them to look the other way. I think we should, you know, do what you got to do and get it done right, and then we'll go from there.
Anything else, Ms. Collins, or Ms. Kupka?
If I may add one more thing that might help guide staff, I just found October 15, 2019, there was a Potomac Landing Section 3 Golf Cart Community Resolution, heard by the Board of Supervisors at that time. I obviously was not on the Board then. So it looks like it was considered in October of 2019, so perhaps then back, or move forward from then, to see if it was ever actually adopted. Yeah, because I don't, I looked, I started looking in 2019, from December back, and found it in October, so. So it looks like the work has been done. So once again, I see no reason to not move forward with what we have this evening, and then our county attorney can bring something forward to amend it later, because the fact of the matter is that if there is a quandary, and those folks in Section 3 shouldn't be driving their golf carts there anyway, that's not going to change by what we adopt tonight. So let's move forward with this tonight, and then have the county attorney address this remaining issue. Thank you.
Quick question. Section 3 and 4, if we address it in further, can we address both Sections 3 and 4? Is 4 mapped out?
4 doesn't qualify.
So Mr. Collins is correct, there's a speed limit, that's one of the threshold issues. So if he's certain that it's above the, the speed threshold, then, you know, I, I would, I would submit that he's, he's probably correct on that account. So it probably is just the Section 3, the westernmost part near Fairview Beach, that we're, we'd be looking at.
Thank you.
All right, if you all are all set, why don't we open up the floor for public comment? So now I will open up the floor for public comment, and I'll remind everybody that you are limited to three minutes per speaker, in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. And please state your name and address before you start. Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors, good evening. My name is Mike Bennett, and my address is 6209 Potomac Avenue. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed golf cart ordinance. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Fairview Beach Residents Association, and I'm here with two of my colleagues tonight, Shirley Buckley and Tommy Kleis, to speak as representatives of our residents in Fairview Beach. I was going to provide you with a little historical context, but you've already done a lot more of that than I was planning to do, but I just want to go back to June of 2020. I thought that was going back far enough, but not as far as the county attorney's been going. In June of 2020, it was the middle of COVID, we had our meetings outside. At the end of one of our Residents Association meetings, we had a town hall. It was attended by a variety of King George officials, our supervisors at the time, Jeff Bush and Annie Kupka, Sheriff Giles, and former county administrator Neiman Young all attended. After their presentations, when they opened the floor for questions, a majority of the questions involved the use and operations of golf carts. A majority of our residents requested that the county change the ordinance to remove the requirement that a golf cart driver must be at least 18 years of age. And I can assure you, during my time as president of the association, which thankfully, I'm not in that role anymore, I got a lot of questions about that, there's always been concern about that. None of the county officials who attended that town hall, including Sheriff Giles, opposed this change, but Mr. Bush was the most vocal advocate, shockingly, in favor of making the change. Mr. Bush's exact words were to the effect that if the Commonwealth of Virginia allows 16-year-olds to drive a car, we should not require them to be 18 to drive a golf cart. I bring up this history to show you a couple things. One is how long this effort has been going on, on our part. And I also bring this up because Mr. Bush is obviously not our supervisor anymore, and our current supervisor, Mr. Collins, has expressed some concerns and misgivings about the biggest substantive change in the ordinance, which is the age requirement. Mr. Collins and I did speak today, as he pointed out, I accosted him in his yard as I was walking by, and he advised me that, as he said earlier, while he has concerns about that provision, his constituents are in favor of the change, both in Fairview and in Potomac Landing, and therefore he'll support the proposed ordinance. And I appreciate Mr. Collins' support despite his concerns, so thank you, sir. As Ms. Buckley will specify, the Residents Association took the initiative to promote, to propose a lot of changes to the ordinance. We've worked closely with Ms. Kupka and Sheriff Giles. I just want to say, we take the privilege of being a golf cart community very seriously. We try very hard to make sure it's safe, and that we follow all the rules. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Next.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Shirley Buckley, and I live at 6143 Seventh Street. I'm currently the Residents Association Secretary, and was appointed Golf Cart Chair in the fall of 2020. The county code and our registration process has remained the same for 13-plus years, so changes were needed. My first steps as chair were to review the current process, the county code, ask questions, and challenge steps that were cumbersome, or just didn't make much sense. As a golf cart owner, I was certainly aware of some of the concerns that residents continued to vocalize. I compiled a list of opportunities for improvement, and presented those ideas to our Board of Directors and our residents. Once I received the go-ahead from our community, I met with Sheriff Giles, and at-large Supervisor Kupka, and Supervisor Bush in the spring of 2021. We focused on the following changes to the code: a valid driver's license, rather than the age 18; clearly defined seating capacity, which was a problem for both of us; define the ratification process; there was no procedure of us, define the ratification process. There was no procedure or form available as part of the county ordinance. We reviewed the current ordinance, which required a minimum of 16 road signs in our very small community. This requirement had never been met by our community nor enforced by the county. Supervisor Cupka suggested we make our recommended changes to the ordinance and submit for county review. I researched 29 counties, cities, and towns in Virginia to get an idea of how those jurisdictions handled the ordinance language. Largest jurisdiction was Fairfax County with 1.2 million residents, and the smallest was the town of Clifton with a population of 309. Based on my research, about 80% of the requests were found, excuse me, within ordinances in those jurisdictions. As a matter of fact, I only found two jurisdictions within age 18 requirement. Our recommendations were submitted to the county earlier this year. I would like to add that we take our privilege to be a golf cart community and the required registration inspection process very seriously. In 2020, we registered 147 carts, and this year we've registered 172. I would like to thank Supervisor Cupka and Sheriff Giles for their guidance and leadership throughout this process, and request that the board vote to adapt the new ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, distinguished board members. My name is Tommy Kleis. I live at 6176 Third Street in Fairview Beach. I am currently the president of the Fairview Beach Residents Association, and as my role as president is to ensure that the association has a dedicated golf cart committee that arranges for registration of golf carts in Fairview Beach, and we always invite Potomac Landing if they'd like to come over. I need to give a shout out to our committee chair, Shirley, who's done just a phenomenal job getting a record number of carts registered. I think it was 192 this year, wasn't it? 192. So it's a record-breaker. She makes herself available all year round to register carts at the convenience of the cart owner if they happen to miss the annual registration event. So it's always available for anybody to register their carts anytime. And so as Shirley said, we take registration very seriously, as it is not only required by the ordinance, but it validates our commitment to the safety of the residents by confirming each cart is inspected and insured. Additionally, safe and proper operation of golf carts in Fairview Beach is quite often a topic of discussion at our association meetings. We also publish the requirements on our website and Facebook for everyone to safely and legally operate their carts. The number of carts registered seems to be increasing year to year, so the association repeatedly reminds the residents of the requirements to safely operate golf carts. And the association continually strives to make Fairview Beach a safe place for everyone operating or riding in a golf cart. So we appreciate the time and efforts of Annie Cupka and Sheriff Giles, thank you, throughout this ordinance change process, and respectfully ask the Board of Supervisors to adopt the amended ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I may, Mr. Chair, based on the information that Supervisor Cupka provided, Section 3 was approved by the Board in October of 2019. For some reason, it was never carried over into the ordinance books, and I don't have a copy of an executed agreement with the Potomac Landing Homeowners Association for that section. But if it's the will of the Board, I'd be comfortable recommending that you all include Section 3, specifically Bamboo Point Road, Vista Court, Sunrise Court, Marina Court, and Anchor Court, if it's the will of the Board to include that in the ordinance enacted this evening.
We're showing public comment. So Mr. Dines, anyone online for public comment?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Has anybody received any written statements for public comment?
Nope.
Okay. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to the Board. Mr. Collins, you had a question?
Ms. Lackey said if it was the will of the Board to include into this particular update Section 3, it would be my will, it would have a consensus to do that. I certainly don't want to violate the law willfully.
Okay.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman. So I'm curious, in the original, all the agreements, it was about golf carts. And I know that during the update, UTVs got added into there. I don't know, I don't know what to feel on Fairview Beach Association is on the UTVs. It's just always added in there. Could I ask their president or their representative what they feel about the UTVs? Do you want UTVs? Do you want UTVs in the ordinance?
ATVs?
UTVs.
Oh, the utility vehicles?
Yeah, like the gators and all that kind of stuff.
I don't see any harm in it. We don't currently have any real issues with that or even see them yet.
Yet.
But we certainly don't object to it.
Mr. Chairman, my understanding from Ms. Lackey is that the inclusion of those vehicles was driven by the Code of Virginia, and that was why they were included from updates in the Code of Virginia.
So the code says that the designation is for use by golf carts and utility vehicles. So based on my reading, that that's, it's required that if one is allowed, the other is. Again, utility vehicles maybe is a little bit of a misnomer, but that's directly from the Virginia Code. It's limited to those vehicles that are very similar to golf carts but not necessarily designed specifically for use on a golf course. So it does not include riding lawn mowers. It does not include all-terrain vehicles. It includes gators and vehicles that are functionally very similar to a golf cart.
Mr. Chair, could I address Ms. Lackey again? So when you talk about golf carts, it has a certain amount of CCs, which means it can't go over 35 miles an hour. So a UTV and these other vehicles can go over 35 miles an hour. And the code speaks of anywhere where the speed limit's 25 miles an hour, it can only cross a road if it's going to another 25 mile an hour area. So my reading of the codes was talking about how many CCs, and so that it's a complete different, a UTV is completely different than a golf cart. And I think that the Board of Supervisors way back when distinguished that because of their speeds. So I think Fairview Beach and Potomac Landing at this time are the only ones that are legal in King George, and I think that everybody's happy with golf carts. I don't know why we would add the UTVs and, you know, add to the mix of what could happen. And I don't even think they fit the category. I read the code too, Ms. Lackey. So is there any understanding why would a vehicle can go over 35 mile an hour be included into a definition of a golf cart?
So the golf carts, utility vehicles, they'd still be subject to motor vehicle laws, so they'd still be bound by that 25 mile an hour speed limit. I think as one of the speakers was referencing, you know, there's golf cart ordinances throughout the Commonwealth. I think there are, I think there are some jurisdictions that say you can't modify your golf cart or vehicle to change its mechanics from what, you know, the factory are. But I think that, you know, that is something that's not addressed directly in the most recent amendment of the Virginia Code by the General Assembly.
So you're saying that the 25 mile an hour, even though they can go 35, that that would cover it because the speed limit is posted at 25?
So they would, yes, they would be subject to the 25 mile an hour speed limit. There is that provision. There is a provision that says that you may be more stringent than, you know, than the minimum that's provided in the Virginia Codes, is similar to the age of the driver, I suppose. You could task the homeowners or residents associations with confirming that vehicles are only capable of going a certain, you know, speed limit. But, you know, that would be something that would be an additional check that those organizations would be responsible for overseeing.
That's pretty cumbersome.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question of the sheriff, and then based on the answer, I'd like to offer a motion. So Sheriff Giles, as a chief law enforcement officer of King George County, Virginia, do you have any concerns with the inclusions of certain utility vehicles as specified in the proposed ordinance?
No, ma'am, not the way Ms. Lackey explained it.
Thank you. May I offer a motion? So I move to adopt the ordinance to amend and reordain Article 2 of Chapter 13.5 of the King George County Code as presented in the packet with also the inclusion of Potomac Landing Section 3, specifically Bamboo Point Road, Vista Court, Sunrise Court, Marina Court, and Anchor Court. Would that suffice, Madam County Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. All right, moving on to presentations and reports. First up, All Points Broadband.
As you recall, we had asked that they attend this meeting, and they actually had signed on to do this meeting. I don't know if anybody's online. Is there somebody online, Mr. Dines?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Well, good evening, members of the Board, members of the public. My name is Tom Ennis with All Points Broadband. Sorry, I had to close my door. They're vacuuming in the office. Here to present an update on the regional initiative across the Northern Neck to bring broadband to unserved locations, and in particular, in King George County. And I think, you know, the first speaker, public speaker of the evening, mentioned Breeze Line, and several Board members mentioned initiatives to bring in some competition to the existing broadband provider. And this initiative is exactly set up to do that. Once we provide service to all locations without a broadband connection today, we will be providing competition to those areas that can get service from a company like Breeze Line. But our focus is unserved locations. So I'm going to start off with a quick history of how we got here for those members of the public who may not be up to speed on the broadband initiative, and a little bit about All Points Broadband. We are a rural-facing broadband internet service provider, which means we focus on areas that traditionally have been left behind by wired broadband providers. There are a number of those communities in King George and throughout the Northern Neck. Over the last couple of years, we've been on America's list of 5,000 fastest-growing companies. And last year, we brought on a new equity sponsor to help us with projects like the one in King George with some real financial and operational expertise. And we're doing something different here that traditional broadband providers have not done, which is to actively participate in partnerships with counties and regions and the existing electric utility providers, whether those are co-ops or investor-owned utilities, kind of breaking the mold here and bringing in those electric companies as true partners. What it results in is cost savings for the county and for homeowners and for the ISP. The one trade-off that we know all too well is that it just takes a little bit longer to get work done with this number of stakeholders and partners, but it is worth the cost savings in the end. So it's a, yeah, across the region, it's a partnership between all five counties on the Northern Neck and Dominion and Northern Neck Electric Cooperative. We've been great partners to the ISP, All Points, and to the counties. The program is managed by the Northern Neck Planning District Commission. They are the grant administrator for the state-level grant awards that the counties have won. And they also provide contract oversight and approval of reports to the state before All Points receives any kind of reimbursement payment. The goal here is, at the end of the project, to have universal and affordable access across all the counties. And like I said earlier, we focus on unserved areas. Those are homes or businesses that today cannot get broadband from a wire. The partnership is leveraging a private investment from All Points and the electric utilities and federal, state, and local funding. And it's going to resolve in what's called an XGS-PON Fiber-to-the-Home Network. The X stands for 10, the G stands for gigabit, and the S stands for symmetrical. So you may have heard about broadband providers offering a 1-gigabit service. Well, this network is going to be able to do 10 gigabits in each direction to every single location. Because you're making a multi-generational investment, this needs to meet demand for the next 20 to 30 years. There is a large amount of co-investment from both of the electric utility providers. This comes from Dominion and what we call Middle Mile, which is kind of the main distribution broadband internet, and those will be constructed by Dominion. I'll have a map showing that shortly. And there's also a lot of infrastructure investment provided by Northern Neck Electric Co-op. NNEC and Dominion are regulated differently, so they participate in this program slightly differently, but they are both key partners, providing a lot of capital and a lot of construction expertise. Go to the next slide. So a quick background on the initiative here. In early 2020, King George, Northumberland, Richmond, and Westmoreland came together to form a regional initiative to solve the broadband problem. This was just before COVID. This type of project had not been initiated before, and, you know, it took a lot of foresight on the part of supervisors to join this type of project. We were subsequently awarded $10.5 million of state funding and $8.5 million of federal funding during 2021 to build out this first phase of the network. We realized, with the help of some supervisors, especially in King George, that there were remaining areas unserved, and we applied for a second round of grant funding, which the outgoing governor in December announced would be awarded to King George and Northumberland and Lancaster. We are hopeful that that will be under contract this month, so we can start construction on that project. The Middle Mile construction for Dominion and some of the Last Mile low-level design started earlier in 2022, and we started hooking up Last Mile connections in May. The first customers went online in Richmond County in June. We hope to be replicating that first lighting ceremony in King George in the next few months. Go to the next slide. So this is what we did in Richmond County. We're going to replicate this in King George. That's county administrator and a couple supervisors at the first customer. In Richmond County, we're going to do the same thing in King George. We can do that in each of the districts. do that in, in each of the districts where we're providing service. We want to make sure not only that the supervisors get credit for joining the regional initiative, but also raise awareness for customers that they can sign up. And this is a great news event that gets picked up and a great way to drive your constituents and customers to the All Points website. Next, I want to show a, a map of the fiber network that's been constructed and is under construction in King George County. The colored areas are what are called fiber service areas. And the, the green routes on there, I'm not sure if, if everyone can see it, but the green routes are miles of Middle Mile fiber that have been constructed. It's about 17 now. 41 miles are currently under construction in the county. And another 35 miles are close to being released to construction. We expect all of the Middle Mile to be done by the end of the year. That's all, all the Dominion routes are, is what's on the map. The green, red, and orange. In addition to those routes, All Points will be constructing Last Mile and customer drops. But that's, didn't want to show it on the map because it just makes it all too boring. But those are the, the Dominion miles. We can go to the next slide. So the, the key items that we're working on for the Last Mile infrastructure, which we spend most of our time on, is making sure that we have, A, a, an upstream connection to the global internet. We got a lot of help from Nick Minor with the EDA on narrowing down what is called a head-end location. That's where the King George network will connect to an upstream connection. And we hope to have that lease signed in the next week or two. The second thing we want to focus on here in the Last Mile construction is what's called make-ready. And as you drive down the road, you may notice certain utility poles seem like they are robust enough to take another attachment. And a lot of poles look like, you know, if they, if they needed another attachment, that maybe the pole needs to be replaced or the existing wires need to be moved. That is a time-intensive process. And each pole is designed and engineered on its own by multiple contractors and by the electric utility. And once it goes through an approval process, then we can actually begin work to make the pole ready for our attachment. That's before we get to any fiber construction. This is probably the most time-consuming part of the entire Last Mile infrastructure section of the, the construction. And it is why we have not seen more progress to date. Like I said, we, we're breaking the mold in the partnerships with the electric utilities. This is an unprecedented number of poles that are being replaced and upgraded throughout King George, throughout the Northern Neck. It just takes a lot of time. We're, we're, the order of magnitude example would be in, in a county, a provider like All Points in the past would ask for, let's say, 200 poles to be upgraded. And this type of project, we're asking for 8,000 or 9,000 poles. And it's just an order of magnitude change. But we're making a lot of progress there. The third thing that we want to do during Last Mile infrastructure construction is to develop a significant queue of constructible miles to release to our vendors. As everyone knows, you know, there are material and labor supply chain issues. So the last thing you want to do is start a contractor and not have a significant queue of work for them to do. So, once we build up a number of miles that have their make-ready completed and all the permits done, we release those sections to vendors so they can work for, you know, 60 to 90 days without having a new set of our waste miles. Go to the next slide, please. So moving forward, the next couple of months, we hope during September to be under the final state award for the Phase 2 project in King George. That will result in additional 34 miles of All Points fiber. A 25 miles of Dominion fiber and 730 locations additional in King George that will be added to Phase 1. We also expect to have retail sales commencing outside of our beta service area this month in King George that, that won't start until early next year. But we do have to have those customers hooked up as early as we can in the first quarter of 2023. And then by the end of 2022, we will have most of the Middle Mile network completed and significant amount of the Last Mile construction underway. And as the Last Mile is constructed in a fiber service area, we will turn those customers on and continue constructing throughout the rest of the county. Outside of, of King George, we won't expect to start Last Mile construction in Lancaster until Q2 of next year. And by the end of 2023, we expect to be substantially complete with the entire regional network. This includes Phase 2, which is not under contract yet. We're spending a lot of extra time to get Phase 2 designed and permitted so they can construct it at the same time as Phase 1. It's adding a little bit of extra time upfront, but it's worth saving about six or eight months on the back end to get it done faster. When it comes to service levels and affordability, like many broadband providers, All Points participates in the Affordable Connectivity Program. This is a $30 per month discount to certain households that qualify either based on income levels or participation in free or reduced lunch program. I think the income level is 200% of the federal poverty line. And if a member of the household participates in free or reduced school lunch, then the whole household qualifies for the $30 off per month. Well in advance of when broadband service is available, we will provide a way for all residents to sign up for this ACP discount. It, it's a federal program, so it's, it's not managed by All Points Broadband, but we will have a portal on our website. It is easy to use. It's mobile-friendly. And customers will be able to sign up through that, through our website for this discount. I have on here a couple of the service levels, the ACP pricing, which incorporates a $30 per month discount, and the undiscounted pricing. You know, as, as any provider would coming into a new area and wanting to get new customers, we are going to be running all kinds of promotions. But these are the rack rates, or what you would see in the, in the fine print after promotions expire. We also offer a voice service for $19.99 with the Internet Plan. And a, a big savings here is that the standard installation fee of $99 covers your installation, even if you have what is called a long drop. So a traditional cable company offers an installation from the mainline service to a home of about 250 feet. And after that, you pay a fee. All Points, our standard length for a drop is 500 feet. And initially, while we're rolling out this program in King George, even if you're 1,000 feet or 2,000 feet or 3,000 feet off of, of the mainline, we're not going to charge a, a long drop fee for a standard installation. So it is a, a huge cost savings for constituents. It's not part of the requirement for the Phase 1 grant, but this is something that we want to offer to King George to make sure that we get as many people signed up as possible in the most affordable way we can. We go to the next one. So, speaking of signing up, the, the website to go to is apbfiber.com. I think to date, between this website and our other site that we had used previously, about a third of the locations in the Phase 1 and Phase 2 locate, project in King George have already signed up. So about 700 residents have already pre-registered. That's great. That means that you all have been getting out the website in your newsletters and updates to constituents. And a, a third of people signing up is a, a great achievement. So what will happen here is a constituent goes to the website, they will enter their address, and they will get a response that is either great news, you can sign up for broadband today, in which case we would encourage them to go through the steps of ACP for the discount if applicable, or they can go ahead and select their service level. If they are in an area where the service is not currently available, they will get a notice that says service is coming to you soon. Please pre-register here with no commitment. You will receive an email when you will be able to sign up. I think if, if anyone goes to the apbfiber.com website now in King George, they'll all get this coming soon notice. But shortly, we will be able to sign people up. They can register for an install timeline and a service level and confirm their ACP eligibility. All right, go to the next slide. So ways that, that you can help, again, continue spreading the word for apbfiber.com. This is for folks to pre-register without a commitment, sign up for notifications on the website. It's mobile-friendly, very user-friendly. We'll make it as easy as possible. Number two, we are hiring for a lot of positions. We would send people there to allpointsbroadband.com/careers. And then, finally, we just, to manage expectations, we need to appreciate the scale of the, the project and the network that we're building. This is several hundred miles of fiber that's going to last 20 or 30 years in the community. It takes a lot of work to get something like that done. We are managing supply chain and labor availability, which we don't expect to have any issues now, but that just means that we gotta bulk up on our orders and the number of miles that are constructible for a vendor. This is also in a new partnership and approach, working with multiple counties and multiple electric providers and multiple sources of funding. If you look at the, the state grant applications in the most recent cycle, there are a handful of, of projects set up this way. But when All Points and King George and the others did this two years ago, this was brand new. So we're really blazing a trail here and making a lot of progress. And I appreciate all of the patience that the supervisors and constituents have had. I also want to be sure that we recognize the local leadership for taking this, this step. In the next few weeks, we're going to reach out to individual supervisors, if they're interested, to have a ride-along and a, a media event with some instruction workers and showing where the Middle Mile network is being built. And I can follow up after, after this meeting for scheduling those and also scheduling the initial customer lighting as we get closer to when those customers will be lit. So with that, I, I appreciate your time and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I do. Thank you. I appreciate you coming, giving information and, and offering that ride-along. I'll take you up on that. But I am very disappointed you're, you're not here in our location so we can ask a lot of questions. And I'm coming from that, from being somebody on the board that started way back when this process started. And we were, the, the pitch was King George would be first by putting up the money first. And we're not first. Richmond County is first. And I have a lot of constituents in the Shiloh District that email me constantly going, where is our internet? And literally while we were up here at this meeting, I had one of them email me asking why we're waiting until the end of the year. So that is one concern that the constituents, at least in the Shiloh District, have been constantly saying, we put the money up front to be first, and we're not first. And we have a lot of people that are moving to King George, you know, this whole thing where we're moving out of the city to come to King George and teleworking. And that's one of the biggest complaints, that, you know, there is no high-speed internet in an area that's close to DC. I do appreciate your efforts. But one of the other things that I, I, I'm concerned about is in the, especially certain areas of the county, have access right to the high-speed power lines from Dominion and the dark fiber that runs down 301. And when I put in my address, it said, I can't get this service because my assumption is the cable company owns a monopoly. So my other question is, in those areas that Breeze Line or the cable company can say they have a monopoly over because of census blocks, is there a way to get the service? Because when I put in my information in that app, it said, nope, sorry, can't get it.
Well, I'll, I'll take that in, in reverse order. So if an incumbent broadband provider claims to and can demonstrate that they have service available in an area, then a, a new ISP like All Points Broadband cannot receive state or federal funding to build internet infrastructure in that area. And the way, traditionally, the way that internet service providers report their services on a census block level. So if, if one location in a census block can receive service, then the Federal Communications Commission considered that entire census block to be able to have service. And it is very frustrating, especially in rural areas, because you have large census blocks. And yeah, maybe people on the main road can get access to, to broadband. But if you're not on the main road and you're in that same census block, you likely don't have service. But the incumbent providers have reported, because this was what the rules were, they reported that a whole block was served. And All Points, we have tried as much as we can to, even, even if a census block is reported to be served, we've tried to narrow down the actual service to a street level. And I think we have all or, or almost all of the locations that cannot get service from a wireline provider included in either Phase 1 or Phase 2. But if you are able to sign up from service from Breeze Line, even if you don't have their service, but if you're able to sign up, then you would not be included in this specific grant program. But a, after the grant program ends, then All Points can invest our own money to build network further into what is considered a served territory. And I think that's why you'll probably see, once, once we're out and about, you'll see maybe some better customer service and some better pricing from incumbent provider as competition comes to town. But for the sake of the, the grant programs, they are very adamant about not going into existing service territories.
I mean, before you go on, I have a follow-up question. It says, my concern comes, and I'm just going to give myself as an example, is it's a cost of entry issue. So some of these rural roads that are right off the mainline, they might, you have to go over a mile back. And so the cost of laying the line from Breeze Line, and I don't have an accurate estimate because my neighbor, it was a couple of years ago, was $30,000 to go down a line. And you think of some small rural roads that might have a lot of fixed-income residents or senior citizens, they, they can't afford that cost of entry. So it just seems, it seems like it's not providing the service. I know it's a FCC and it's a higher authority than you are, but that's where a problem, especially in Shiloh, you have, you have lower-income residents that the cost of entry, they can't afford Breeze Line because they can't bring it down the line. And they see those utility poles and that dark fiber going down, and they don't understand why they can't get the service. And they would have to go with a cable company that would want $30,000 or more.
I very much understand their frustration. And those are the exact locations that, because of the rules for reporting broadband service, get overlooked. And I'm not sure about that individual case or that road, but I, I would be happy to follow up with you afterwards and look at some, some specific addresses.
All right, thank you.
What was the question, what was the answer to the question that King George was supposed to be first?
Mr. Anderson, you didn't answer that one question that I also have along with Mr. Collins, is that King George County put in even extra money, if I'm correct, to be first, and we're not. So what is the, what's the answer to that question?
Right. So King George did make a commitment above the other participating counties in Phase One. And just as a quick reminder, all of that money from the county is held in escrow by the Northern Neck Painting District Commission, and is not released to All Points until we can demonstrate, you know, construction or activities related to the spend, and then we get a certain portion reimbursed. The way that it works now is for each dollar of the project constructed, King George is charged 1.11%, and it's the same rate as the other counties. So we hit some permitting and easement issues early on in King George that set us back quite a bit, and we had to open a new front of construction in another area of the region in order to keep the regional project on track. And that is why we have not finished the King George section. So while I know King George initially made a commitment that was above the other counties, in actuality, we're not charging one county more than another. And, you know, we hit some pretty substantial permitting and easement issues in King George that we just didn't have in Richmond County, and we had to open a second front of construction to keep the regional project on track.
Mr. Chair, I want to follow up on that one. Because I wish upfront, you could have said that you won't be first if there's issues, but it was billed as being first, so you might want to reconsider that for the next time, because that's what's gotten a lot of, at least Shiloh representatives upset.
May I ask?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Tom, just to be clear, it is very unfortunate that we, we didn't have that beta test site, Richmond County did. I think it would have been nice if that could have been communicated to us sooner, because I learned of that when that press release went out, oh, look, there's the Richmond County Administrator. That's not my county administrator flipping the switch. So while I had been informed that there were some permitting issues and easement issues that were slowing things down for our community, if perhaps the company could have been a little more proactive in letting us know that, as a result, we in fact were no longer going to be the priority beta site. But number two, it is also my understanding that while we did, in the first round, submit more money than the other localities, overall, it is the same amount of money for every locality. Is that correct?
And I apologize for the poor communication on my part. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. And then just one other thing, I had communicated with you all a couple of months ago, I made a suggestion that someone from the company attend our Fall Festival, and I just sent you a link, the signup was not open at that time, but I would highly recommend you all have someone to set up a table to distribute information about service, because that is the largest event held annually in King George County. Thank you.
Yes, we will be there.
Thank you so much for coming out and providing the presentation. Appreciate the update. I think Ms. Bender and Ms. Cupka already hit upon the point in particular that that was our biggest concern in regards to not being first, so I won't hit that any further. I'd just like to say, though, in regards to the efforts to try to connect people on long distances, still having that $99 connection fee, it's encouraging to hear you say things like 1,000, 2,000, 3,000. When you're talking 3,000 feet, you're talking over a half a mile at that point. So I just want to say thank you for looking to try to make that happen, and especially in this Phase One, Phase Two, I know when that's when it's going to be available as part of this effort. So I would encourage all county residents that have the availability to get into All Points Broadband, to sign up for the Phase One, Phase Two, because I believe after that, then the connection fee would probably be altered, and it might not be as generous. So get in now would be what I would recommend. And again, thank you for making that available to those citizens.
Ms. Collins, anything? All right, Mr. Anderson, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, and I'll follow up for you for scheduling some of the individual supervisor ride-alongs.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, moving on to next presentation, Native American Driving Tour Grant Submission for the Virginia Tourism Corporation, Mr. Minor.
Tonight, I'll be presenting on the Virginia Tourism Corporation ARPA Tourism Recovery Program, which I'm including the Native American Heritage Trail within it. So this is just a quick overview of the program. TRP funding is a set aside for the county. It's approximately $30,000. It requires a letter of support from the Tourism Supervisor Committee, which the department has already received. The proposal for the grant money must be submitted no later than December 30th of 2022 this year. Approvals will be made as plans are submitted and reviewed. This is a non-competitive grant, so this is our money that's set aside for us specifically. Funds must be used for tourism marketing and development, public relations, advertising, media buyer sales, and product development. The funds can't be used for staffing, maintenance, replacing the budget, the VTC love work creation, enrollment fees, tourism education, and promotional products. Next slide, please. So to be funded for this program, you have to submit your proposal to the VTC through a portal online. VTC then approves and releases half of that funding, so approximately $15,000 would come to the county. Once it's approved, the county BOS has to agree to accept that funding. The second half of the funding is released on a reimbursement basis, and my department will be responsible for providing invoices to confirm that spending that we send to VTC for the next five days. So what I'm using the funds for, one is the Native American Driving Tour. I'll be requesting funding for at least six signs, as well as geocash.com. This is a county-sponsored geocache trail that complements the Native American Trail, and then the trail and county marketing. So I'll be advertising the trail and the county as a whole in the Northern Virginia Magazine, the Richmond Magazine, also brochures to go along with the trail, as well as marketing production and photography, profile video creation, and then a landing page that will specifically be linked to the Native American Trail. Next slide, please. So the total request will be $29,300. For the product development side, $14,000 is set aside specifically to stand up the trail, as well as the geocache trail, and then the remaining $15,300 will all go towards the marketing. And the way I've laid it out is if I receive that funding this fall, I will go to implement the signs this year, and then next year, it will be a full-on marketing campaign for the county, as well as the trail. I'm happy to take any questions.
The signs, those are the same signs that the interns from Mary Wash or the students worked on as well?
Correct, sir.
Okay, so they just came up with the design, graphics, everything, and?
Correct. Design, graphics, as well as they wrote the narratives for each sign. They were obviously corrected and looked over by the professor for the Department of Historical Preservation, but they're the ones that did a lot of the legwork, a lot of the meat of the sign work.
So you're just taking their ideas and putting them action on the?
Right. Well, it's a collaborative effort, right? It was a collaborative effort between the tribes. The tribes have to approve every narrative that was written, as well as the professor. I still am in communication with them, being sure that they're okay with everything that we're doing as we move along with it.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Minor. Okay, moving on to action items. 904, Department of Finance Adopt, Appropriate the King George County FY 2022/23 C Capital Improvement or Capital Budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to add that Chief Moody has a representative?
Right. After Donna gets through, whatever, I figured it came up for there.
He is available for his presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. At a work session on August 23rd, 2022, the King George County Board of Supervisors reviewed the capital projects budget for fiscal year 2022/23. The purpose of this action item is to request adoption and appropriation by project as presented below. It is recommended that funding be appropriated as follows. For parks and recreation, capital equipment upgrades at $75,000, as well as the Sedell Brooks Park Restrooms at $395,000. King George County Schools, purchase school buses, an additional $531,540 to go to what they had remaining from the current fiscal, or last fiscal year. Preschool needs assessment, $60,000. Access control system at Potomac Elementary School for $75,000. General properties, relocation of general properties for $350,000. Information technology, network management and cybersecurity for $256,000. Computer replacement at $125,000. Cybersecurity state compliance at $60,000. Voice-over IP redundant server at $78,000. The geo-enhanced 911 SIP compliance software at $50,000. And Cisco Meraki equipment maintenance renewal at $250,000. Community development, document scanning at $70,000. Solid waste and recycling, Skidsteer at $100,000. And emergency services, ambulance replacement program, $300,000. And then the emergency services, Opticom preemption system at $230,000. The next pages that were included in your board packet detailed the funding sources for each of those. The funding solution for each of the projects listed above that I just went over, and my recommended, recommended action is that you adopt and appropriate funds for the approval of the capital projects as presented.
Any questions for Ms. Hahn or anything?
I ask a question, Mr. Chair. So Ms. Hahn, how difficult would it be if we wanted to add something this evening based on guidance that we received, we requested during the last CIP work session, specifically with regard to a, an ADA accessible playground at Potomac Elementary School? I personally requested guidance from the county attorney with regard to possible liability, and we have since received said guidance, and so is that something that we could add here?
You could amend my recommended action to include that, because that was presented.
Was presented, yes.
It was presented, it was at the public hearing, and there are sufficient funds that I could find the funding source for that to cover.
Could you recall the dollar amount for that project, when you have a moment, please?
Yes, I'm not, I'm thinking it was like $110,000?
I believe it was $102,000, if I remember correctly.
Mr. Granger's got it right here.
Oh, you know what? I have it, too.
$102,000.
I also have a second question on the, on Potomac in particular, is there, I think it's, and Dr. Boyd could help me on this, there's like three playgrounds at Potomac, if I'm right, which one is this replacing, would this replace?
The Potomac, this wasn't, was this for Potomac? Okay. So you want to?
What I'm asking is because in my lifespan of my daughter going to school there, who is now in seventh grade, I remember the playground at least being replaced once. So which one needs to be? But currently, none of the three is technically ADA compliant. Okay.
Perhaps Dr. Boyd could come to the microphone. I don't think that some people are hearing that.
I apologize. Thank you. So right now, of the three, I think we just need to have one that would be ADA compliant of the three, none of them are ADA compliant.
Any other questions for Ms. Hahn? I guess before we go ahead and do what we're going to do with that, would you like to hear the presentation?
I'm sorry, could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I appreciate it, thank you. Ms. Hahn, so I see the list of projects and the planned funding lines. Is there a reason we wouldn't want to try to move more from the operating budget over to the ARPA line? Or is that the maximum that we could justify based off the requirements of ARPA?
One of the reasons that Mr. Miller and I discussed about the ARPA funds was that, you know, those are funds that, you know, we have a little bit of time to spend, and we might have other projects that come up throughout the year that we might need some ARPA money for. I could certainly move them over and leave the money in the operating budget, but that was the amount that was set aside in our operating budget.
So the only reason I would maybe suggest we'd want to use the ARPA fund is that it is more limited, correct, in what we are allowed to use it for?
Actually, our county qualified for the maximum?
That's right.
Of the $10,000?
Okay.
That replacement revenue, and our amount was much lower than that, so we can use it for any items of regular county.
But we have 1.268 million built into our operating budget yearly currently?
In this?
In this current fiscal year.
In this current fiscal year.
So I don't know, I just, because the ARPA funds will expire if we don't spend them.
They will, but we haven't.
It means we got to spend them, then.
Yes, we do. We have to, they have to be committed by December 31st of 2024.
So?
So it's possible that next fiscal year, we might not have as much built into our operating budget, but I mean, it's?
I don't know, I just, I look at it from the perspective of if we, if we don't need to spend it at some point, like, hey, we didn't need to go with every, I mean, I'm sure we can find things to spend it on. But then, you know, we don't need to spend that money either, and then it would mean a reduction in the amount that we would need in that operating bunch or carryover for the following year, which could go forever. I mean, that money never expires. That's the only thing I'm kind of looking at from that perspective, and I don't know, I can't, to me, it seems to make more sense to say, hey, let's try to use the ARPA funds now, instead of spending our money, which doesn't have an expiration date. But I don't know, I'll leave it to my colleagues to weigh in if you think I'm being unreasonable.
And one thing, too, I would caution is that some of these things that are ARPA-funded, we all know how the economy is going, and we've had numerous projects in last fiscal years, funding that were, had to be split funded between ARPA and general CIP funds because of the costs coming in over estimate. And I was going to suggest, when Ms. Cupka also mentioned about the ADA playground, that that come out of the ARPA funds, lowering that, but then, of course, we don't know if any of these projects will come in at what we've estimated, or if they could go over, and we might need to appropriate additional funds for those projects.
I can appreciate that, but right now, we have 1.1 million in ARPA funds. And I don't, I don't think they're going to over cost that much personally. I don't, I would kind of take the stance, I think we should maybe move some more over to the ARPA line. But again, I'll leave to my colleagues to weigh in.
I agree that we should use the ARPA funds. Mr. Granger made a good point that the budget funds are, can be there for as long as we decide. The ARPA funds won't, so. Spend those first. Two.
And also I tried to use things like the information technologies projects that are recurring projects year after year, coming out of operating budget. Instead of saying, oh, we can use the ARPA funds for that because the ARPA funds are going to go away. And if we get accustomed to using ARPA funds for something that we would need our regular operating funds for. Just a suggestion of not getting in the habit of using money that's going to go away for routine.
Right, I understand what you're saying, but I'm going to be of a mind that we're going to use all those dollars at the end of the day. Well, states giving us that money, we have needs that we can certainly find enough things that, yes, it's not like we're not going to be able to find some way to use that money that would be to the benefit of our citizens. So I don't know, to me, it's six in one, half a dozen of another. I would like to still see some more come over. Just my take.
Chair. No, I wouldn't mind seeing more from the ARPA funds that aren't reoccurring expenses. So there's, looks like there's a lot of them that could fit in that category.
We also have Chief Moody and a rep here to talk about the, or give a brief presentation of what the optocom system is. You all want to hear that before we move any further. Chief Moody?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening to you. I'm pleased to be here tonight with Mr. Jack Herbert. Jack Herbert's the owner of J. and O. Herbert Company. He, their company is the sole distributor of the optocom system for all of Virginia, all of Maryland, and the District of Columbia. I'll turn it over to him in just a second. I do want to preface that, you know, one of the more hazardous things that we do is just responding to calls. Going through intersections, getting there safely. As some of you may recall, we, over the past decade, we've had two fatalities that resulted from public safety vehicles and intersection collisions. One in June of 2011 with a state trooper. One in September of 2018 with a neighboring county ambulance transporting through one of our intersections. I really am an advocate of this, this program. I think it makes for a safer response, safer for our responders and safer for the public. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Herbert.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to give the presentation tonight on the optocom emergency preemption equipment. To begin with, a little history on my company. My father started the company, incorporated it in Virginia, Chesterfield County in 1973. Our focus and emphasis has always been on traffic safety and traffic control products, specifically those used at signalized intersections. Our company is SWAM certified as a small business in the Commonwealth. And we do maintain a staff, technical experience with these products that exceeds 80 years. The optocom branded products are the only approved products by the Virginia Department of Transportation for use at their signalized intersections for emergency vehicle preemption. GTT is located in Minnesota, St. Paul, Minnesota. They're the manufacturers of the optocom products. As you can see, over 50 years of experience with the emergency preemption. This began with public safety, first responders, where they were equipping the fire and EMS vehicles with optical emitters. That's moved now to include sheriff and police. Then they have moved into the transit realm using a lower priority emitter to allow transit vehicles to stay on time and also safely move through signalized intersections. They are now looking into smart mobility. You'll see a little information further on about smart cities. But connected vehicles are becoming a more and more topic of discussion within Virginia. And GTT will have a presence in that space as well. This is just a couple of examples of the seriousness of the first responders when they're responding to emergencies. As you can see, that in 2016, the second leading cause of fatal firefighter industries came at signalized intersections, crashes. And the numbers of crashes that have occurred during that same time period is significant. So what we do with the optocom product is improve safety at the signalized intersection. But it is also a key to increasing or reducing the response time to injured people. Cardiac arrest in particular, it's very critical, time sensitive, to get to people in cardiac arrest and transport them to the hospital. By changing the traffic signals and allowing easier and quicker movement of the emergency vehicles through the signals, we can reduce those times. And as you can see here, they're showing up to 25% faster response time once optocom is installed. The United States DOT study, and this is where I was speaking regarding the smart cities. Under the safety heading with smart cities, optocom is considered a critical component to allowing signal preemptions, giving right away to the emergency vehicles. Looking forward, what they're talking about for future responses, using, not using lights or sirens when responding to an emergency or transporting patients. So having the emergency vehicle preemption at the intersections can be a key component to allowing that to happen. How it works, so optocom is an infrared based product. You can see the emergency, let's see. There we go, yes, thank you. So the emergency vehicle is equipped with an infrared emitter. As they approach traffic signal intersection, the optocom detector is installed somewhere near the center of the intersection. It receives the encoded strobe from the IR emitter. That signal via cable goes into the phase selector that's installed into the traffic signal cabinet. That phase selector then verifies the direction of travel based on the detector response. And it sends a signal to the traffic signal controller, sends an input to the traffic signal controller. That allows the traffic signal controller to go through its process of giving the green light safely to the approaching emergency vehicle. So here we'll have a couple of slides showing three different scenarios of what can happen at a signalized intersection prior to optocom being installed. Let's see. I don't see any way to start this. Must be time, it's making changes on its own. It's advancing before I'm trying to get it. Chris, can you go back? Yes, there you go.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question while they're getting that squared? I noticed on one of your slides, you talked about the ISO rating. Does that help the ISO rating in the county?
It does, yes.
And the renewal and licensing, other than the fee, the first fee, is there a renewal on license?
No. No, there's not for the optocom system itself. If you decide to move forward with a centralized system that communicates to each of the traffic signals and brings data back, that does have a licensing fee. But for what you want the product for now, the program that you're looking at now, it's, you have the fixed investment and no further fees.
Last question.
A little in advance of the bus sitting there, you can see the cross traffic moving through the intersection. And without any. So this particular scenario is from Fairfax County, Virginia. And I think this one is even more pointed in the fact that without the preemption, without being able to turn the light green, the motorists in front of the emergency vehicle don't know what to do. They don't want to move forward and cause an accident. They're trying to get out of the way and you can kind of see just a little how problematic this is for the rescue squad trying to get through the intersection. And there's no audio on this one. So then the next slide will show some, a couple of scenarios where optocom has now been installed. And yeah, the next one. And this is going back to the original intersection that we showed in the video. Okay, right. So these are the three main components of the system. The IR emitter is installed on the emergency vehicle. It's activated as the first responders get into the vehicle and turn on their lights. The IR detectors are the devices that are mounted at the signalized intersection. They receive the encoded strobe from the emitter. And then they send the call, the approved call down to the phase selector. The phase selector receives that and sends the proper input to the traffic signal controller so that the emergency vehicle programming will activate and allow the vehicle to pass through the intersection safely. The bottom, you can see where the Fredericksburg District, where King George is located, approximately 270 signalized intersection. And they currently have about 180 of those installed with optocom. And this gives you an idea of surrounding localities that are using the optocom products. They talk to here about all agencies are required to run first. And that terminology, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe is, is one where even if you're in a neighboring municipality or county, if that fire station or EMS station is closer to the call than one actually in the county where the calls originated, they're still required to respond. So there can be reciprocity and mutual support throughout the county. Another reason why Virginia itself has designated optocom as the sole product. They want to have that ability for interoperability between the agencies. Down at the bottom of the Fairfax County Fire, they've been able to have decreased runtimes on their primary EVP routes. Success story, this one's from Ohio, where they went in and they wanted to achieve accreditation for the fire department and also improve emergency services, both safety and the services that they provide to those in need. They were able to do that. The fire realized a 42% reduction in response times. EMS has realized a 40% reduction. Then lastly, the ARPA funds you're familiar with, just discussing those. Optocom does qualify under ARPA, so if that's an opportunity, that would be one you should also pursue. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Chief, I had a question for you. I mean, is this, is this going to be just a fire apparatus or is Sheriff's Office going to do it as well?
Yes, sir, that's a great question. So this is our department and the Sheriff's Office included in that proposal.
So they're still going to have to fight through traffic if they turn right out of the existing Company Two. At, you know, four o'clock in the afternoon, I was stuck in traffic from Potomac L all the way to Wawa. So they're still going to have to fight traffic there until they get within 2,500 feet, was it, of the traffic light?
Yeah, I think this, this system, it will be most effective on 301. You know, with the traffic that we see there on Fridays and Sundays and holidays, this is going to help Company Two out tremendously. Because as they pull out of the station, now it's not going to help pulling out of the station, no light there. But anywhere where there's a traffic intersection, a traffic light controlling an intersection, when they have a line of sight coming down Dowran Road and they pass, when they get almost close to passing Food Line, that emitter has already triggered. It's already changed, if that, if that light is red, it's already changed it to start cycling through green. And then if, whether they go north or whether they go south on 301, they're going to go, they're going to go through the same things. Those, when those emitters hit with line of sight, then those traffic signals are going to be changing. Now, one could be, you know, climbing up the hill, going south on Windsor. If you have some 18-wheelers there, there could be some line of sight issues. But the goal, the whole purpose of the project is not to make it 100% where you don't have to worry about an intersection being red. That's not the goal. The goal is, is for 90% of those times, I mean, we still have to be prepared. And one, one of the, one of the reasons why you have to be prepared is that if you have, if you have intersecting emergency vehicles, if the ambulance is coming one way and the sheriff's patrol cars coming the other, and both, and both are trying to hit the emitter, well, one has to override the other. So we still have to be prepared. Sometimes it may be a line of sight issue with a big RV on the road or an 18-wheeler. And you may, you know, or you're coming around a curve. So there, there's still going to be some of those, some of those concerns, but it would be, again, 90% better than what we're dealing with now.
And that's all the traffic lights here in the county? And then you also said the other day when you spoke about it, up towards Mary Washington into Fredericksburg?
That's correct. So anywhere, as Jack had stated, out of the 270 intersections in the Fredericksburg BDOT residency, 180 of those have Opticom system. It would work on whatever of those, of those 180. What we have to figure out with the city of Fredericksburg is because the city of Fredericksburg just maintains their own transportation, so they control all their traffic signals, is we have to make sure that our emitters will work with their, with their transmitters and that, and which intersections they're controlled on. Right now, I don't have a definitive answer. That question's still yet to be determined. Because we don't know whether ones like at Lafayette, we believe there is, and the Fire Department believes there, there is, but there's, they have to check with their transportation people and let us know.
All right, and then headed north, I couldn't quite make out the map, what about going up into like Sevastah?
Yeah, so Charles County, that, that map was of the whole council of government. That's why that map, it really not so much relative to us because, you know, outside of Charles County. But yes, going to Charles Regional in La Plata, Maryland, it would work.
Okay. Anyone else?
I've got one question, thank you. Can this system be spoofed at all?
I believe there's a lot of protections into that. In fact, we were just talking about some of that. Jack would probably be the best person to answer because there are some protective measures to prevent that. So to answer your question, no, I don't know of any, they use, that, so the emitter is sending out a code, and for someone to replicate that, I can't say that it would never happen, but I don't know of any instances where that has happened. The other option that lends itself to safety here is you can program codes into that phase selector and code each one of your emitters and set up coding systems throughout other counties to limit access if you think there's someone that's abusing the system. So it documents it. That phase selector keeps all the preemptions there with, if you've had, if you're using coding and it keeps all the codes on there, you can go out with a laptop and retrieve that data. If you think there's someone abusing the system and there's a code in there that you don't recognize, then you can verify that and eliminate that particular code.
All right, thank you.
Chairman, so this system, it still doesn't, you still, the Code of Virginia still requires and have due regard for safety during intersection to stop and observe and move forward. That liability doesn't change from the, what the firefighters and sheriff deputies are required. I would be curious, I would have a feeling that this is going to go forward, what the numbers would be of how fast are you, you know, get to respond to calls. I would hope that you would capture that data. And earlier you mentioned about state police. Do they have these?
No, I'm not aware of any state police that are, that are equipped with Opticom.
They'd have to purchase themselves.
Yes, and I still believe with the DOT, there would have to be an agreement with, with the state police specifically, and I'm not aware of that existing at this time.
I'll never have any, too big of organization.
Let me just mention something about, about that particular piece, Supervisor Collins. If they decided to go on with that, the infrastructure that this would purchase would be in place. So the infrastructure would be at the traffic signals. What they would have to purchase is the emitter, and the emitter is probably the lowest cost portion of that, of the system. The real nuts and bolts is the, is the, the receivers and transmitters going on to the intersect, going on to the traffic signals at the intersections.
Yeah, I was just curious whether they were in any talks, but it doesn't, doesn't really matter. I mean, one of the key things is rescue and fire to lower times, you talk about the cardiac arrest and brain injuries and so forth. So I'm a fan, especially when it's coming out of the ARPA money. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, taking what Supervisor Granger had indicated, and I think what Supervisor Collins had also indicated, I mean, we're happy to accommodate that and make some of those moves. We can do it tonight, and we can go through the list. I mean, I can look at some of those, those IT issues there and, and recommend that those could be moved from operating to, to the ARPA funds. You're adding 102,000 possibly for the Potomac Elementary ADA. You know, maybe we don't move the GEO Enhanced 9/11 Compliance Software and leave that in the operating and leave the cybersecurity state compliance, that's 110,000, and you leave that in the operating and you, because you're going to add another 102 back to the ARPA. You do have some room, is what we're saying. We're happy to do it. We can do it tonight. We can make the, we can make those kind of decisions tonight, or we can bring you back a new version of this based on the direction that we're getting. It's up to you guys, how you guys want to do this.
And ARPA funds expire in 20?
They have to be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and spent by December 31st of 2026.
You know what, I'm going to pull back because we're going to have, we're going to this, I understand now, I'm tracking now, I apologize. We're going to go through CIP next year, and we're going to use it next year. There's going to be needs regardless. So six of one happen, doesn't have another, really, to me, at this point, so.
Yeah, and I think what Ms. Hahn and I were trying to do was, was leave you some room to come back and address some things. I will tell you this, there will be some extra costs associated with the, the general property site, there'll be some site development costs. Those weren't included, obviously, in the planning commission's review, so we can't do anything about it now. But when we get to that information, Mr. Cusenberry, our county engineer, gives us some information, we would then come back and you could amend it. I think there's also the Ralph Bunch projects that are kind of on the, if you get the amount of money that you're trying to get in that project, you would come back and add that in as well, so.
Tracking, I appreciate, like I said, I think I'm amenable to what we have presented. And I, to be honest, I'd like to add the, the school ADA playground as well, if my colleagues are interested in doing that.
All right, well, I guess there's other questions if someone wants to make a motion?
I move to adopt an appropriate funds for the approved capital projects as presented, and with the exception to make a change to include the access, I'm sorry, the Potomac Elementary ADA playground for a total cost of $102,000 to be appropriated against the ARPA funds.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. 905, Department of Finance, accept an appropriate donation for relocation of the Confederate Monument.
Yes, at the Board of Supervisors meeting on May 17th, 2022, the board voted to approve the use of $41,000 from the Tourism Fund balance pending donations for the relocation of the Confederate Monument to Historyland Memorial Park. At this time, the county has received an additional donation in the amount of $1,000 to be used towards the cost of relocating the monument. These funds would be appropriated to the TAC fund to cover a portion of the relocation costs, so to replenish their fund. So at this time, I'd like to ask that the board authorize the county administrator to accept the donation in the amount of 1,000 and to appropriate the funds to the Tourism Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes, and thanks for that donation to wherever it came from. 906, Department of Finance, budget amendment for FY 2122 to true-up Rappahannock or Juvenile Center.
Yes, so during budget generation, the Rappahannock Juvenile Center presents King George County with our share of the operations cost for the center. This amount is an estimated, is an estimate based on previous year's usage. The localities portion for the operating budget for the center for 2021, 2022 was, well, the, their operating budget was $4,038,465. King George estimated portion was 7.186%. It actually goes out a few more decimals, so if you're trying to do the math, Mr. Granger, it came out to be 290,201. However, during fiscal year 21, 2021, 2022, the county had a total of 36 children for a total of 512 days at the center. After the calculations were completed, based on the totals for all localities, King George percentage increased to 9.35% or a total of $377,596.48. This results in a shortfall of $87,395.48. We've received a, an invoice to true-up that, the contributions for last fiscal year in that amount of 87,395.48. At this time, I'd like to ask that you authorize the county administrator to transfer 87,396, because we normally do budget transfers in full dollar amounts, from the general fund balance to the Rappahannock Juvenile Center budget, and that is for 21, 21, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. So we pay by, by the kid?
I'm sorry?
Pay by the kid?
We pay by the, not only by the child, but the number of days that the children are there. That's how they allocate the, the total operating budget that is attributed to localities. They get funding from other sources, but they come up with a portion of their budget that is just to be split by the localities based on, and that number of days calculates the percentage of usage.
I would think their operating budget would be based upon the number that they need to operate for the year, no matter where their kids come from.
The operating budget includes things like salaries, and you can't hire or terminate a staff member just because the usage fluctuates day to day and also operating expenses like your utilities and other costs, and along with salaries, all of your fringe benefits. So there's, there's a lot of detail that's broken out in those estimated operating expense costs.
How many kids were, were there last year?
There were a total for King George County, a total of, what did I say, 36 children for 512 days.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any nays?
Nay.
All right, chair votes aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, 907, Department of Finance, true reappropriate, reappropriation of King George County School Funds.
Good evening, Chairman Stonehill, members of the board. In relation to fiscal year 2022 budget, King George County Schools has the desire to reappropriate $1,088,559 from the Instructional Category Fund to the five other categories listed above in the motion to reconcile the budget for Fund 250 for the King George County Schools. General operating budget transfers are completed to ensure that no expenditure category is overspent prior to the final audit and the completion of the annual comprehensive financial report. The recommendation, it is recommended that the Board of Supervisors by motion approve the King George County Schools' request to reappropriate $1,088,559 from the Instructional Category, which is category 61100, to the Instruction Categories, 61230, 61310, 61320, the Administration Category, which is 62110, Transportation, 63100, 63200, 63400, and Technology, 68100. Lot of numbers here. Facilities, 64100, 64200, and finally, the Operating and Maintenance Subcategory of Fund 250, which is 66200, 67100, and 66600, as identified on the attached documents.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a question. Is this from last year's budget? Which budget is this for?
So from what I understand, this is from last year's operating budget. This was typically a process that was done administratively in the past, and it was, my understanding, that it was recommended from the auditors that we formalize this process. And when this, these final transactions are performed so that the Count 250 is rectified, we do, we would bring this motion to the board prior to the audit taking place.
All right, so does this money have left over?
Yes.
So if we don't approve this, the money then goes back to the county? Is that correct?
If, if you don't approve this...
Like, I guess my question is, because there's not a lot of information here, I just need more clarification.
So technically, these are funds that have already been spent? They're just re-appropriating them from one major category into other major categories? It was money left over in one category, but it's overspent in another.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
I know, I don't...
So, so for example, the Instructional Category is about, is typically about 80% of our budget.
Right.
Superintendent creates a need-based budget and puts everything in there that he would need in terms of instruction. As we all know right now, it's very difficult to meet the needs for instruction because there's the teacher shortage. However, last year, if you look at some of these other categories, for example, category 61230 was homebound instruction. That category spent more money last year than it was budgeted for because homebound instruction through COVID skyrocketed. So we took money from the staffing positions we, we could not staff and took care of the requirements or the needs that we had within the homebound instruction category.
Okay.
All within Fund 250.
I understand that, but should have this, I guess this could be corrected in the future, shouldn't this come before us earlier, before the funds were overspent?
I'm not sure that it ever has before.
Mr. Collins, you were on the board, school board.
1250 is the instructional, and so they've used money from the instructional to pay for the utilities of 388,000, which was in their operating budget that the Board of Supervisors gave them for that utilities project. So they moved that out of the instructional. Interest payments, I'm not sure where that came from. But then you have other things that are moved out of there, the 250 fund, like power equipment. Those things are supposed to be in, that's why I wanted to approve by category. So it's, so they're taking it out of a, a category and put in another one because they spent more money. They decided they weren't going to spend it in instruction. They decided they weren't going to spend it in instruction, want to spend it in something else, which is, I think, problematic from the way this Board operates, that we give them money to spend in the categories they request. Unusually, sometimes they'll come and ask for the money being moved into a particular category for a particular reason, but not before it happened. So you're, you're essentially correct.
So we request money, the Fund 250 is the entire fund. That includes all of the categories that were discussed. So that includes instruction, Fund 250 includes administration, transportation, technology, operation, maintenance, all of that is within Fund 50, and that is what we come annually with and request those funds within that account. Within that account, like I said, I think traditionally, for years, administratively, money was moved from those different subcategories with, without Board of Supervisor approval. It's been my understanding now that this has been a request following the annual audit that we followed this process.
Traditionally, it was wrong. So that, that's been problematic for some time.
Could I ask Ms. Hawn to come back to the, to the podium? And then I have a question for her. I, I would like to, is this an item that has to be done tonight, or would it be beneficial to the Board to have Mr. Grossnickel from the Audit, the Audit Company to come and maybe explain this process? Because I, I think that, I'm just assuming that could be maybe instructional, I mean, maybe not, but...
So I'm not sure that he would be able to come and discuss this prior to our audit, which is in three weeks. And if this is not done at this time, we will get an audit finding on our audit this year? So, I mean, it's, it's a, time is of the essence, so, as far as approval on this. But, and you know, and like I mentioned, the funds have been spent. There are certain things, like when you look at operation and maintenance, and you talk about utility bills. Well, again, like at the Juvenile Center, are we going to cut the lights off in the facilities because we've spent what we estimated our electric bills are going to be? And I don't know all the ins and outs of everything, but bus drivers, I'm sure you've had to pay overtime for bus drivers because you don't have enough bus drivers to go out and pick up the children. So, you know, I, I don't, I'm not as familiar on all those costs, but I think that going forward, it can be a partnership between the county and the schools when we work on the cash flow reports to take a look and see where we are in each of these individual categories so that we can maybe identify sooner in the year if we are going to see an overrun of some of these categories.
Mr. Chair, this is where my problem is, is that this should have become before now to correct this, this oversight. This is a lot of money, and I don't think we, you should be asking for permission now to get this correction. Something, some ball was dropped somewhere.
Bender, Mr. Chairman, Bender, so the auditors basically said you've been doing this stuff wrong for a while, so now you have to fix it. So I would just, from here on out, I would suggest that our, our Board does it by appropriations, so we won't have these problems. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Kupka.
I would just remind everyone that, as Mr. Collins noted, they're trying to do it the right way this time, so I understand everyone's concern and hesitation, but let's not punish them for now doing, trying to do it the right way.
I, I don't think that, Mr. Chair, sorry, I don't think we're talking about a punishment, you know? That, that was the case, we wouldn't say give the money back. But I think that, that, just trying to send a message that, even when I was on the School Board, I asked these questions about moving these monies. So I hopefully, that from here on out, that it will, it'll be different. But it does, it does not feel good, I can tell you that.
And, and that's why I suggest that going forward, there be a partnership between the school and the county finance. You know, maybe even, you know, we get together and have, once we get through the audit and have meetings to discuss budget between the Finance Department at the schools and the County Finance Department and work together.
I'm not trying to beat a dead horse too much, but I, I, I'm not talking to Dr. Board, I'm talking to the School Board. So they have a way of doing this and say, well, the Board of Supervisors will pay for it, and that's pretty much what happened. So that's the end of that dead horse. Thank you.
Okay, nothing else? Anyone throw a motion out?
So may I offer one other? Not sure it's a parallel, but we just, in the prior, a couple prior actions, adopted and appropriated the capital budget for the county. And there were things where there was money designated for certain school projects, right? That wasn't spent on that school, school project, but we had no problem re-appropriating those funds to other new projects. So this unfortunately happens at times, and I just think we need to look at this with a little bit more flexibility, that's all.
Mr. Chair, I understand where that's coming, but we do need to have a partnership and a path forward so this doesn't happen anymore. We need to clean, clean it up on all sides.
I move to approve the King George County Schools' request to reappropriate $1,088,559 from the Instruction Category, 61100, to the Instruction Categories, 61230, 61310, 61320, Administration, 62110, Transportation, 63100, 63200, 63400, Technology, 68100, Facilities, 64100, 64200, and Operations and Maintenance, 66200, 67100, and 66600, as identified on the attached document as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. So the salaries, is that taken out of the Instructional Category and put into other things, but it's called salaries? So next year, will it go back into salaries again? So is it, for this year's budget, are these things in the budget, the salaries that were moved here?
Yeah, I mean, it depends if it was a recurring cost, which salaries are. You know, I think, you know, the School Board has used these funds many times in the past for capital improvement projects, but also for salary step increases. I think that's has, that has been used in the past for these funds.
Was there such a large amount because of the number of vacancies in teacher positions? I'm, I'm hazarding a guess that's a reason.
That's a very big, yeah, that is the biggest reason.
And it's just hard to, to get more teachers come in, and, and so it's less of a cost, not that subsidy-free, but you don't have to pay for all the, the benefits and everything.
So Dr. Vincent is creating a need-based budget, we, you know, we need X number of teachers. You guys approve the fact that we need that many teachers, and then we go out to look for these individuals, and they're currently not available. So that money sits in the Instructional Account, which includes salaries and benefit packages and other things in that line item.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. 908 Department of Finance, Change Order Number Four, associated with Fairview Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project. Ms. Pitts.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I have the last few items on the agenda to present to you this evening, the first of which is Change Order Number Four, associated with the Fairview Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project. In April of 2021, a construction services agreement was executed with Finish Line Environmental for the Fairview Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project. This was a unit price bid, and the final quantities and payments are based on the final survey information. The increased quantities associated with this change order were in placement and compaction of fill due to significantly more erosion than estimated that was concealed by cudzu, placement of riprap also due to an additional erosion, and backfill of the seawall, site conditions required a larger trench. The final volumes were quantified by field measurements and agreed to by Finish Line, Schnebel, and county representatives. The change order request has been reviewed and is recommended by Schnebel Engineering and the county engineer. This change order will increase the total amount of the agreement with Finish Line Environmental to $1,737,751.97, an increase of $78,021.35 over the original agreement. The change order also increased the contract time by 55 days. The project is now complete. There are funds available in the project construction contingency for this change order. With that, I would request that you authorize the county administrator to execute a change order with Finish Line Environmental to increase the contract price of the Fairview Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project by $54,263.52.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. 909 Department of Finance, Execute a Contract for Systems and Network Engineering and Technical Support Services.
Yes, so as the Chairman said, this next item is to execute a contract for systems and network engineering and technical support services. Procurement issued RFP 0321 2022-1400 to solicit proposals from qualified vendors to provide systems and network engineering and technical support services as the current contract services have ended. Funding for this was included in the FY 2022/23 CIP presented earlier this evening. On March 21, 2022, proposals were received and evaluated by staff. The two top-rated firms were then invited to interview. Staff determined that proactive information management was the overall top-rated candidate. Attached in your board packet is the cost proposal for annual expenses. And with that, I would request that you authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award and to execute an agreement with proactive information management for network engineering and technical support services in the amount of $255,788.16, subject to approval as deformed by the county attorney.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. 9-10 Department of Finance, Award a Goods Service Agreement for the King George Countywide Fiber Phase Two Project.
This second phase, the IT redundancy plan of 2019, is needed for the King George Fire Rescue and Emergency Services Department and the Service Authority Water Treatment Facilities. We'll take advantage of a new fiber internet connection to provide additional internet services for our fire rescue company two and three, and brand-new services for our Service Authority facilities, Dahlgren, Fairview Beach, and Hopyard Farms. Fire Rescue would like to ensure the three fire stations can make use of the new internet connectivity to support the effective life-saving services, which is their public safety charge. The Service Authority lacks reliable internet service at their facilities to adequately navigate their online water management activities on a consistent basis, or in some instances at all, depending on the water plant location. King George County IT provides services to satisfy the information technology requirements of all county government offices, of which these two departments/offices are two of the most important in the county. We look forward to providing the internet service that these two offices deserve and need to complete their tasks. Thanks to an act of Congress, localities were granted crucial use of extra existing internet service lines during COVID. Our Board of Supervisors played a key role when Ms. Kupka then chaired with the unanimity of the Board formally contacted our Representative Rob Whitman, asking that this internet use be introduced and put on this, on the floor for a vote. The result, we are able to use the extra strands of schools' fiber that are currently located along the several key roads in the county. Also, we would like to acknowledge the IT leadership of the King George County Schools' Division, Hillary Half, the IT manager, Dana Reed, the network engineer who met with Mr. Miller, Chief Basham and Mr. Eisenbeis, and Chris Dines from our IT department, and informed us all of the E-Rate rules protocols that they researched and verified with their E-Rate representatives. On July 8, 2022, proposals were received for King George County Fiber Phase Two Project. Funding was approved at the Board of Supervisors meeting held on October 19, 2021, in the amount of $358,000. Staff recommends that $15,050 be transferred from the ARPA projects line to this project. County staff have determined that computer cabling and technology is a qualified responsible and responsive contractor. With that, I would request that you authorize the county administrator to take the following actions: to transfer $15,050 from the ARPA projects line to the countywide fiber phase two project line; to issue a notice of award to computer cabling and technology services in the amount of $373,050; and to execute a goods and services agreement with computer cabling and technology services in the amount of $373,000, $373,050, subject to the approval as deformed by the county attorney.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Kupka?
I would just point out that the company's COI in the packet is expired. Can we please make sure we get an updated one?
Yes, we'll do. That'll be part of the contract.
Thank you.
The Water Authority is, we're paying for the Water Authority's access to this fiber?
That's my understanding. Chris Dines is probably a better resource.
How much are they putting forth?
Yes, the Water Service Authority was in on the initial redundancy plan we had because most of their facilities don't have any internet. We've given them air cards. The Dahlgren facility is one of the worst because of the availability of the LTE from Verizon. So that plant does not have adequate internet service, and with their new product that they have, like, that Ms. Norris Parker presented tonight, and plus their SCADA, is that the name of that, SCADA, that they use to make sure the water treatment plants are running okay? They have issues sometimes connecting to the internet to do that part of their programming. So at first, we weren't going to do Hopyard, but we wanted to see how much it would be to include them. But of course, with the availability and the cost that's have gone up with the infrastructure for IT, we weren't able to come underneath where we wanted to be, but we thought that we should include them because Hopyard is one of our newer communities, and we'd like to make sure that they have all the best that they can have, and the rest of the county can as well be on the same plane.
Right, but it's not the Board of Supervisors' responsibility to have the Water Authority. They got these systems for, to be monitoring, and they should have took into account the cost it would take to monitor, not the county, out of the county's budget.
Well, for them, we were...
You may air cards, right?
This is true, but for them, they were one of the main ones that could take advantage of using the school's existing fiber so that that would lower the cost to share that route with fire rescue, because their facilities run not too far away from the fire rescue facilities as well.
Mr. Miller, can you enlighten us more on this?
I, I think I would say two things. One, so essentially, all of Mr. Dines's operations and the things that he does, you know, from a capital standpoint, are absorbed by the county. There is no cost-sharing arrangement right now. There is no cost allocation arrangement with the Service Authority. That at one time may have existed, but it was in previous boards just done away with. It's, it's one of the reasons that we talk about the, the merger. And, you know, right now, that's obviously on hold. The other thing that I would point... would point out is we can certainly have an inter, I mean, Ms. Ms. Hahn just left, but I would say this, we can do an interfund charge if that's something that the board is concerned about, and the cost can be absorbed by them as part of their operating budget. But it is one of those things that I think your IT function is done by the county's IT individual. We provide IT service to a lot of other areas that aren't necessarily a part of the King George County proper. The Service Authority is obviously one of them. The DSS, in some respects, is a part of what the county's on. And so, you know, that's why it was done this way. It was just a project that's being managed by IT. We can do whatever accounting we need to do on the back end of it once we get moving on it.
Mr. Chair, I just, so in the board report for this evening, it's referenced the original appropriation from October 19, 2021. And I just visited the board packet, and that too is ARPA money. So this is all ARPA money. This is not county taxpayer, personal property tax, and real estate revenue funds. This entire project is being funded by ARPA money. And in fact, on October 19, 2021, Phase Two was approved by the Board of Supervisors in the amount of $358,000, ARPA money. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to add too that the Hoppyard plant is vital for wastewater because they do have the SCADA system. I've toured it, and it will be sort of the regional hub for the wastewater plant when Perkins Corner in Oakland Park are decommissioned. So it'll be vital.
Yes. And when they get their service, we'll probably have them pay for their internet service, the monthly charge. We pay for many of the offices, but we do not pay for the Service Authority for their phones or their internet. They pay their own at the little building, little brick building, their main office. So.
Thank you, Mr. Dines.
Thank you.
We have a motion? Oh, we did? Sorry. Got lost. Yes. All right, we have a motion that was properly seconded. And now, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion passes.
Chair, I have one thing to bring up. I caught this at the bottom of the boards and commissions. Do we need to address that the whole tourism advisory committee, their their terms have expired as of the end of August?
That was on my county administrator's report.
Okay.
But if you want to go ahead and do that, that's perfectly fine with me.
Well, I'll make a motion to reappoint the the slate here that's in our board packet for the tourism advisory committee, which terms expired August 31, 2022.
If if you don't have access to it in the county administrator's report, it will show the members of the TAC board that are that Ms. Bender is talking about.
I could read them off if you'd like me to. All right, David Hall, who is agriculture, Becky Stewart Arts, Jerome Hayes Civic Organizations, Bob Baird Cultural Historical, Dee Strauss Education, Warren Veezy Outdoor Recreation and Lodging is vacant.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. All right, Mr. Miller.
Okay, so I know that it is a very late hour, but I just would like to just point out that that board packet item on the Phase Two was written by Mr. Dines, and he did a great job. I just want you all to to just give him congratulations. He did a great job. Although I will tell him that brevity is better at the late hour usually. But so the other item that needs in a that needs a recommendation, a nomination of Ms. Jessica Emery as the alternate representative to the CPMT. So I would need something like that here in a second.
I move to appoint Jessica Emery to be appointed to the King George CPMT as the alternate representative for King George County.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you.
The next item is just, and I'm not going to read through them, but the employee anniversaries, you can see, we start at the top level, 28 years of service, Patty Norris Parker with the Service Authority, Michael Thompson with the Sheriff's Office, the SRO, 24 years. Is that right? Kerry Guzman, our Commonwealth attorney, 20 years. So that just shows you your your the folks that had an August anniversary of their employment. The next slide we have is the new hires, number in Parks and Recreation, and then our newest Assistant County Attorney. She snuck out, but Jessica Washington, so we're very thankful for for her service. Rebecca Baker and Randy Blake in the Communications Division of the Sheriff's Office are also new hires. So I'm sure they're very appreciative of their service there. The only other item that I have is is at your desks, I did include the a full listing of all the to dos. And as you remember, I indicated that we'll do break things down by kind of the administrative area, the fiscal area, community and economic development, and then there would be things like capital projects. What I'd like to propose is that this list, the non-capital is every meeting, and I'll update them as we go along. Obviously, I have a new item to put on there as per Mr. Collins, the updates on the Verizon, the Breeze Line, and and the GFL. I know that the trash situation has been rectified, or at least in the conversations with their representative, they indicated what was going on, and I think they've responded pretty effectively. If you're still having problems, let us know, but we'll pass that on to them. And then what I propose is, once a month, have the capital projects. Capital projects obviously can change quickly, but some of them are a little bit more drawn out because there's certain phases to them. But if there's any questions, and I know that maybe tonight is it's late, if if you don't have any right now, that's fine. If you grab it and want to look at it later, let me know. If there's a different way you want to have this formatted, I had recommended it be done as part of the county administrator's report. I know that the only concern that I would have is that that's kind of way back in the agenda. And when it gets a little late, everybody's kind of looking at me just to kind of wrap this thing up. So I'm happy to put it on the agenda, but then at the same time, I don't want to take away from other agenda items. So that's all I have, unless there's any specific questions.
Chair, I think it's working fine the way it is. Just leave it the way it is. Everybody has opportunity to look at it. The public has an opportunity to look at it. I think it's working fine the way it is. I don't think it needs to change.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. If that is it, do we have a motion?
I move to adjourn until September 20 at 6:30 PM in the boardroom.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned.